Appropriations, public hearings, order. It is 6:55 on Wednesday, June 19th. Diane, please take the roll.
Karen.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Dennis. Diane. Here. Gaddy. Here. Linda. Here. Tim.
Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Void of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. The purpose of this hearing is to allow the taxpayers of the Niles Main District Library to comment on the tentative budget and appropriations ordinance before it is made final. We require people to sign in for the public comments. We don't require them to give their addresses. Comments are limited to five minutes. Audience is not participating with people who are making comments. Trustees do not have to reply to comments, but they can if they wish. And this session is for public comments only, not for trustee discussion. All right. So, the first person on our sign-in sheet is Mr. Steve Dougherty.
Who do I stand today?
You may stand here. Or here. It doesn't matter. I decide. Whatever you put ahead.
Good. Good evening, everybody. I'd first like to start out that I have read the building assessment report, which has conflicting statements in regard to roof replacement. One section, the west area, recommends replacement because of puddling. I'm forty years facility manager, and that is not a good reason to do that. Then the report states the west roof is in bare condition, and the east roof is in very good condition, and that their area is copper and does not need to be replaced. The report states that these roofs should be replaced by capital replacement plan. That's over a period of years, not immediately. So, why are we asking for $1.5 million to replace all the roofs, and they do not need to be replaced at one time? I recommend that this $1.5 million be removed from this budget and put into a capital replacement plan. Also, Susan said in the meeting, "We save money all the time." And Susan, please begin to report these savings to the board. Because all we hear, or all I hear as a resident, is "spend, spend, spend." I like to hear just a few bucks here and there. I understand that the library had a sixty-year anniversary celebration that was invite-only. I've lived here for forty-five years. How much was that? How much was spent on the celebration that I helped to pay for, but I was not invited? Why did the library increase the Capital One program, that's a newsletter, from four to six times a year? I understand publications for $7,000 an issue. I'd like to see this Capital One be put back on the agenda to review and consider bringing it back to four times a year. It'd save us a couple of bucks. They also use color and high gloss paper. Save us some money. Building maintenance costs $2,228 and change. Susan, I'd like to sit with you and get more details on that, and maybe I can actually help you, or be able to make suggestions. I have that background.
I'm sorry, Steve. Could you say that again? Now, Stephen knows.
Yeah. Building maintenance cost, $228,593. I'd like to meet with Susan to get more details on that. I'd like to be able to help her if I possibly can. Won't guarantee it, but I have a strong background in facility management. I recommend a committee, I recommend that a committee be set up to review next year's contract, with residents included. I've seen this process, this budgeting process, go through two meetings, post for thirty days. It's a rush, rush, rush. From my point of view, I think we ought to slow down and look at things a little more closely, and work with the village, or excuse me, work with the library to help them give the best service they can at a reasonable price. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next person on our list is Dinek Mathias.
That's after budget.
It is for the budget.
No, it should have been the other one.
Okay. You don't want to speak now?
No, after budget.
Steve, could you give me another time, please? Get your break or something. Okay, then for budget, the next person on our list is Mr. Carabota.
I think Carabota, Niles, Illinois, and also Main Township trustee. For your look back, year 2015, your spending was $5.9 million. Year 2016, your spending was $6.8 million. Year 2017, your spending is $6.9 million. 2018, your spending is $7.3 million. Your spending now proposed is $8,416,671, or in that ballpark. An increase of $1,000,000, about $1,115,000 a year. Main Township, we just debated back to taxpayers a refund of levy of $1.25 million. It's extremely upsetting, all the hours of time, days, and effort that we put forth to streamline our budgets at Main Township, serving over 135,000 residents in many regards, only to have that $1.25 million sucked up by the Niles Main Library Board. We need to stop. Just stop it. Now, I've been here before. I was here in 2015. I was here in 2013. I was here in 2017, and I predicted it. And I predicted that we're going to hit $10 million. You have to look around your village. You drive through our village, you see empty shopping malls. You see a lot of areas that are having trouble. You see homeowners that are leaving. And there was a suggestion at this last meeting that maybe we should have a study, because there was presented that the state of Illinois is having a negative budget problem because of pensions, because of all these various 7,000 bodies of government, because of all this spending. There should be a study. A study costs money. I suggest you just go online to WirePoints. WirePoints is a research group that puts together all those articles, and you will see it. You'll see how people are leaving the state, because you won't stop. And the reason why you won't stop is because you think more programs is what I want, is what's best for the people of Niles, and you're wrong. This is not a community center. I never voted to build a community center. We have a library. This is supposed to be a library. There is no reason why this library should operate to close to $8.5 million a year. And what we do as trustees of the township, we tell our departments what we need to see, because the taxpayers can't afford it anymore. And they come back to us. That's what they're paid for. It's what we have salaries for. And they come back with those changes. And we make those changes. We just finished our budget again, and our other governmental bodies, not just Main Township, that's doing it. You're not getting the message. Well, maybe you get the message from Warren Buffett. We may know Warren Buffett. Nice guy, kind of knows his stuff when it comes to finances. He came out and said and publicized he would never open a business now in Illinois. Never. He also would never keep a business here in Illinois, because of all of this outrageous spending. So, we got to stop it. The only other answer, when it comes to this library, because I'm talking to the wall, the only other answer is that this board be merged into the Village of Niles Board, and the Village of Niles handle the library finances. We can combine two governmental bodies into one. We don't need all this duplication. And I'm, the sophistication and effort that's put forth when it comes to budgeting is at a much higher level at the Village of Niles than here. Not because you're not capable, but because you're not doing it, and you won't do it. I'm hoping I'm wrong. I don't want to see this budget pass. I want to see this budget cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our next speaker is Stephen Yessel.
Evening, board. I just, as in watching some of the online meetings over the past few months, and the last time I was here, I was talking about something different than the budget, so I guess I'll address that at a different time. But I'm curious as to how much of the budget actually goes toward the procurement of current collection or catalog of books that we have, the maintenance of keeping those books within the library, and what constitutes books to be removed from the library. And my hope is that if we have referenced books that haven't been checked out in years, I wouldn't want that to constitute a removal of those books. People's taste in history changes all the time, and it could be a student in school that needs to do research on a specific historical figure or a specific era, and they need to find the resources. I really hope that they think of this library first. So, my only concerns right now about the budget is that we're properly taking care of the collection that we have, and that we're able to provide it for the generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Joel McCula.
I got a, to print the information, I got a copy of the engineering facility report from April this year, and I want a quote from the analysis there. It says, the engineer says, "The building and site indicates a consistent and routine investment in maintenance and upkeep. The facilities are in excellent condition with no signs of major problems or neglect other than long-term items." Okay. I'm concerned about the roof. You have $1,000,001 set aside in the budget, which is the problem we have, why this budget is way over here. The library has three different roofs. They can classify them as east, west, and copper tower. The assessment, the condition of the east roof is good, and no maintenance or repair is needed. The assessment of the west roof is fair, and that is because it needs flashing repairs, which is a regular maintenance of sealing the perimeter of the roof. A small part of the roof under the chiller is beginning to deteriorate because of condensate probably inside the building, in the area of refrigerant line from the freezer, from the chiller. The cold refrigerant is going back up into the chilling unit, and it's causing condensate. And this is not, this, they claim shouldn't be a problem for three to five years, maybe even more. It may not even cause any leaks, it's just that the condensate is there and makes the roof a little bit soft. And the softness is insulation under the roofing material. In this case, only the area under the, if this should go and start leaking there, only the area under the chiller needs to be replaced. This is a rubber roof. These can be cut out, insulation replaced, and that section can be put in and bonded, only that one section. So, that's the only section of concern in this west roof. This roof costs only a fraction of a complete roof. The problem is actually insulation under the chilling unit. Nevertheless, the engineer doesn't call for a need for any possible roof replacement for three years or more at the earliest, and it could be much more. This is for the west roof. There's no problem now, just routine maintenance has been going on and has been budgeted for. The copper tower roof is assessed to be in good condition, and regular maintenance should prevent any problems for at least ten years or longer. Okay. Therefore, the $1.1 million in the budget for roof replacement is a big fraud on the taxpayers for four reasons. The roof is not needed at this time, and the engineers can't say exactly when in the foreseeable future a new roof will be needed. Maintenance on these roofs is already budgeted for. Number two, the $1.1 million budget number is at least $1 million over what it would cost for the entire older west roof, which doesn't need replacement now anyway. Number three, the $1.1 million estimate was gotten for this budget, no estimates were gotten for this budget increase of 16% initially, but I gave you a list of six roofing contractors that provided bids for a similar roof on the ice arena and the park building adjacent to it on Ballard, with a bid of $1,200,000 accepted by the park district. The board admitted they had no real estimates, but full speed ahead cast this million dollar mistake in their budget, all the time knowing there was a million dollar error in it. There are reserves set aside for these already, and no funds should be budgeted for this. What's really happening here is this part of Cook County was reassessed, and the appraised values were increased by about 16%. This could be a windfall for the library if they could grow their budget and tax levy, and that's what's going on with this bogus capital budget. This is fraud and milk reasons on the part of some or all, and ignorance on the part of others, period. You must cancel this fraudulent budget now and pass an honest budget no greater than last year's budget, plus an inflation rate of 2% or less. If not, then you should extend and continue to operate on last year's budget until an honest budget could be passed. Let's take this out of the budget, so there's no chance taxpayers can be hit with a possible tax levy increase in November. The truth is, I don't think the taxpayers trust this board, and I think if they knew what was going on, this room would be filled, and the hallway would be filled too. Thank you.
Susannah, did you want to speak at this meeting or the next one?
This one.
Next person is Susannah Tannus.
Thank you. Is there a time limit?
Yes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Carabota.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have utmost respect for this library. It's a great library. The board seems to be operating the way it should, and it's one of the nation's best libraries. I don't know how many libraries in Illinois have that rating. This one does. And thank God for it. I'm going to keep it that way. And it takes money to have the best library. And many other students from other suburbs come here. I know if you want to get an A on a research paper, you better come here and use their books. Their books are up to date. They're outstanding. And this is the library you come to to get an A on a research paper. I know that. And we're going to keep it that way. We have to do more for the employees of this library. I know there's an IRMAP. I don't know everything there is to know about it, but I know if this library does not take care of the employees, we are not doing the right thing. So, 3% of the budget needs to go for their pension, otherwise we're ripping them off. Now, based on what Mr. Carabota said... Is it good pronunciation?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. I don't think that the Niles Board should put its two cents, more than two cents, operating this library. You have enough to do taking care of Niles. And you don't always do a good job. And it's not all their fault. We're ripped off by the capitalist system, and I've been talking about this for fifteen years, and I know what I'm talking about. Until the indexes, S and P, Dow Jones, and S, they get out of our way, we are ripped off, Niles is ripped off, all towns and cities and counties and states and countries, and people and individuals and families are ripped off. We want to be paid according to the true profitability of these billion and trillion-dollar corporations and banks, while stockholders gain the same rate of profit and bonuses. This will be plenty of money for Niles Library to bridge Niles. Families will have enough money to put their kids to college, pay for the health insurance. Why do you think there's a problem with measles? Because families don't have enough money to take their kids to the doctor. And there's millions of people like that. We've been ripped off too long, and it's not this big mouth that can do it alone. We all have mouths, and they better be open, and they better be talking to your politician, because they're going to receive soon. They're going to be given two weeks notice in each house, represent them in the senate, and if they do not vote yes, you leave. The next time that the house or senate is in session, they're not going to come back. That's the only way to stop this runaway train and their garbage, and if it's garbage, it needs to be thrown out. Taxes, loopholes closed, wealthy pay taxes. What is this Trump, do you think you're going to get your air traffic controllers work free for free? Okay? And there's a lot of them like that. The richest don't pay taxes, so we're going to clean that up. If they don't vote yes, they don't come back. And there's another few issues that should be in that category. No assault weapons sold to the public to ensure domestic tranquility, want the general welfare, this is stated in the constitution. If you don't do that, you're not following the constitution, you don't belong here, I don't know what you're following. If it's garbage, it's going to be thrown out. I'm Susannah Tannus, running for US Congress, Niles District, Democrat, to clean it up. If you want to help me get signatures, let me know. I'm a Niles library, I'm under her, but Tannus, my father. But I'm going to make sure it's going to be cleaned up. The Niles Library deserves to have this budget passed. I have utmost respect for the people sitting in this room, including Susan Lundt, but she needs to take care of the Niles employees first, and I don't care how much they're getting from IRMAP and their own contribution, it's not enough. 3% of every budget is supposed for the employees' pension, otherwise you're ripping them off. And I will not tolerate, and I've been talking about this for five years, take care of the employees, but then, next year's budget is not in this year. Thank you. Please do what I'm telling you, because I'm not here for my health. Thank you.
No further comments? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. It's 7:23 PM on Wednesday, June 19th. Diane, would you please take your role?
Karen. Here. Carolyn.
Here.
Dennis. Diane.
Here.
Gaddy.
Here.
Linda. Here.
Here. Okay, before we start, the regular portion of the meeting, I do have an announcement. I was contacted by trustee Dennis Martin, and announced that he regretfully informs us of his decision to resign his position from the library board, Niles Main, library board of the Niles Main District Library effective immediately. He says, "My other commitments have become too great for me to be able to fulfill the requirements of my position on the board, and I feel it is best for me to make room for someone with the time and energy to devote the job, to the job. Serving on the board has been a fulfilling learning experience for me that I am grateful for, and I regret to have to move on to other things. If I can be of any assistance during the time, I will take, he will take the full position. Please don't hesitate to ask." So, we want to extend the thanks to Mr. Martin, to trustee Martin, for the time that he was able to spend on the board, and guess we thank him for his time, and we regret that he had to leave his position. We will discuss our procedures for going further, further to fill our position in the other portion of our agenda tonight. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of May 20th, 2019? Diane, would you please take the role? Ah, I'm sorry. First we do the changes.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Any discussion on the minutes of that meeting? So, okay, let's take one second on this too. What I'd like to implement is some procedures, and we're going to talk about that at another meeting, but I think I can implement them as we move forward. So, I think we can all agree that our meetings have been a little more energetic than we would like at times, and I think if we implement some procedures, then maybe we can control that. What I'd like to do is, first, when we have a discussion, start with the person who made the motion, and then go systematically around the room until each trustee has had their opportunity to speak. And let's see if we can limit the discussion. Let's try it. As Steve had said a couple of times, we can try something. If we don't like it, we can change it. So, let's try maybe limiting to four minutes or so for each person. If that doesn't work for us, we can try it again. So, at this time, we can start our discussion in the minutes, and Karen has made the motion, so we can start with her. Any changes on the minutes for the special board meeting? Thank you. Gaddy? No. Diane? Linda? No. Carolyn?
Well, actually, I noticed that the minutes consist of the fact that the budget was presented, and then we had an ordinance that was up for vote. So, there isn't, there aren't any details regarding the budget that we discussed in the minutes. And I know for a fact that there were many questions and comments made by myself and trustee Martin, and I also requested information, although it was denied, but none of these budget issues are listed in here. So, where is it that our discussion for our budget was noted? Again, we lack the accurate account of the summary. So, did we not intend to mention our budget in our minutes?
Do you have a recommendation for any changes?
Well, I would like the questions and the comments to be included. There were several. I mean, I can send you an email, but I'm just wondering why we jumped from, we had a board meeting, to then we voted. We didn't talk about, I'm sorry, the budget. We didn't talk about the budget meeting in the minutes. I mean, I questioned pricing or costs for strategic planning just to start off the meeting. That's not in here. And there were several other things. So, what's our, what's our purpose here? Because we missed the information about the budget meeting in the minutes. So, I'm glad we sent you an email, if that's what you're asking, but we really can't approve minutes if they're void of the entire meeting.
Anybody else have a comment, anyone? Open for suggestions.
Right. I think this is supposed to be a summary of what happened. There is a recording of the meeting, which anyone can watch, and it lists everything that every person said during that meeting. I think the minutes are a fair summary of what took place at the budget meeting, and they tried.
Did I miss something, but can you point out where the summary is? I don't see it.
It is a fair summary, which is all that we, that is required of the minutes, just a quick summary of what took place at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Gaddy, any comments on that?
I'm trying to not get too many comments.
No, get as many as you want. The question is open to us, that we feel that this is a fair summary of what happened on here. We can discuss it.
We'll get minutes before. Some of them were kind of like long-winded, is, you know, they were trying something different, and I just couldn't see any issue there.
Diane?
I think the ones that are available online, as anybody has access to them, is worth a very important.
Linda?
Yeah, I agree. It does say that we talked about the proposed budget, the year, and, I mean, it's just a general piece of what we did. It doesn't have to be specific.
It should be an accurate summary. There's no detail.
I understand what you're saying, but we are making the decisions aboard of these things. So, let's call...
I would like to then ask if you could include in the minutes my statement which was made regarding our budget meeting. I would like to then ask if you could include in the minutes my statement which was made regarding our budget meeting. That wasn't included in the minutes either.
Could you read the statement?
Sure. "I have a concern and want to make sure that the message we are sending to staff is certainly not one that the administration or this board takes lightly, the cost on residents to support this library. Although as staff persons stated, we're not interested in decreasing, we should always be interested in reviewing our costs, because you can always do something better for less money. But if our staff feels they're not interested in decreasing costs, because this becomes a battle, then we are not presenting the budget process correctly."
I don't have an issue with including that statement on this particular board meeting minutes. Karen?
I accept the changes, I don't think they're necessary, but I'm accepting.
Patty?
Same here.
Diane?
I accept it.
Linda?
I'll accept it, but I don't agree with it. Because I just don't really feel that we need to put in all the quotes that everyone makes, all the time. However, I'm...
We need an accurate summary of our meeting.
This is an accurate summary, according to me, however, I'm fine with that.
All right.
Do you need a copy of this for the secretary?
We will need it for Diane, we need it in order to put it in.
Thank you.
So how do I state this? Is amended, is amended? Do I have to ask for another motion?
No, I agree, we're running on the second round, so we'll change this.
Yeah, so now we just vote, right?
We just vote. Can I have a vote on the amended changes to our minutes of May twenty?
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn? And?
Yes.
We're just voting on...
Approving it.
Moving on the agenda with Carolyn's addition to it.
Are we voting on my addition or on the minutes?
Yes.
On the minutes.
On the minutes with your addition. I'm approving my addition, but I'm not approving the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was...
You're approving the addition, we're, we're voting on the minutes with your addition.
Okay, so I'm approving the addition, yes.
Well, there's not a vote to approve the addition, we've all agreed that the addition would be on.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm voting yes.
You're voting yes.
But I want to clarify, I'm only approving my con, my paragraph.
Carolyn? We're voting, Carolyn, Carolyn?
That's my comment, do whatever you want.
But you're not listening to what we're voting on?
I know exactly what you're voting on.
What are we voting on?
I think the minutes are incomplete, but I'm voting to have my paragraph added. That's my comment, so my answer is yes.
See, what you're voting, paragraph added, but you're not voting on the minutes, to approve the minutes.
I just did, if you want to make a big deal out of this, go ahead.
No, I'm confused as to what you're voting on.
I, I know, confusion runs rapidly.
Ah, yes, it does.
My answer is yes.
I'm a trope of a statement.
All right. I'm sorry, Linda, what did you vote?
Vote no.
You voted no, you know what, I'm gonna vote no, too.
Okay, the most sure, the minutes are not approved.
The minutes are not approved.
As amended.
As amended.
But the regular...
The regular minutes.
The way they were.
Yes, the way they were.
Well, I hope they make sure of what the...
I don't think we...
We didn't vote, all right.
We didn't vote on our...
Let's take another...
They voted on the regular one, you have to approve the amended.
All right, so...
You have to have approved minutes of this meeting, so you'll have to vote again on the minutes.
All right, I will ask, I will resume my motion.
Yes, thank you.
To approve the minutes of May twenty-second.
Twenty, twenty.
Thank you. Second, good, all right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah.
You're on the first meeting, I'm gonna be second, please. Excuse me.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Diane, just a second.
Okay, Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
No.
Diane?
To approve is the...
Yes, the originally written.
Yes.
Patty?
Yeah?
Linda?
Yes.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen?
Similar.
Karen, I'll second. All right, any changes, Karen?
No.
Patty?
No.
Diane?
No.
Linda?
I listen here.
You look here, okay, thank you. Carolyn?
Um, yes. I noticed in the board minutes, under the director's report...
I'm sorry, what page are you wanting to?
Page eight. You included Susan Limkey's comments, and trustee Martin and I both commented that her statement that we were offending staff wasn't our intention, and we clarified exactly what our position was with the issue at the budget meeting. But you didn't include that, you just included her paragraph. So I was just wondering why, because again, we need an accurate account of what was discussed. You excluded my explanation and trustee Martin's, which indicated we were not, we didn't have any issues against staff. We were, we were discussing the issues with our budget, or lack of information for our budget. So once again, you excluded that.
Do you have a change that you're asking for?
If you'd like me to submit one, I can email it to you, but I don't know that this board will approve it, so once I know what your position is, I'll be glad to email those comments.
I'm, I'm sorry, what, are you proposing any changes to these minutes at this time?
I'm stating that you eliminated my comments and trustee Martin's, and I'd like them included.
Well, unless you have them here, I don't...
I haven't typed them up, because they're quite lengthy, there's, there were quite a bit that was said. So, I mean, if Susan's paragraph can be entered where she claims that her staff would be offended because of what was said, we just tried to clarify that, and you eliminated that.
When you say you, who are you talking about?
Whoever is approving these minutes or approved the writing of these minutes.
Well, we haven't approved it yet, so...
Well, somebody dictated these, or somebody transcribed them, so somebody thinks they're correct. So I, I'm not sure how we do that, well, they're not transcribed, they're selectively... Type of nothing's in here that you want to change, or so you just want to add something, is that what you're saying? Yes, once again, you eliminated my statements and trustee Martin's.
So if we eliminated the paragraph starting with Ms. Limkey commented, would that suffice for your objection?
The first paragraph, yes, because it's, it's not accurate, in terms of our position.
Sure. I do not have an objection with that. Anybody have an objection to that?
In the movement, movement, I think the minutes are correct as written. However, in an effort to move this along, I don't have any objection to that particular paragraph being in.
Patty?
I have no...
Diane?
I don't agree with removing a paragraph that... I mean, I agree, an effort to move this along.
Okay.
You don't like it, but...
Linda?
Yes.
All right, Carolyn, do you have any other additions or subtractions from the minutes?
Uh, no, that was a...
Great. All right, can I have a motion to approve the amended minutes of the regular board meeting of May twenty-second?
You have a motion already?
I accepted the...
You accepted the, accepted it, all right. Diane, could you take a little call?
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
No, no vote.
I was gonna say...
Isaiah, I'm saying...
Tim?
All righty, thank you. Has anyone registered for public comments for this portion of the meeting?
Did you, uh, did you consider, like, Suzanne's mark? Oh, Suzanne's, yeah.
All right, I thought Suzanne was for the, oh, 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 I'm sorry. All right. Again, when addressing the board, speakers will be limited to five minutes per registered individual, thirty minutes for overall, and speakers must maintain a professional demeanor. Our first speaker is Mr. Steve Darn.
Here's my observation of this board after attending six out of seven monthly meetings. This, this board does a lot of good things for our community, and I appreciate their hard work. But the administration needs to do a better job managing the budget and programs offered by the, by the library. Administration, for the past twenty years, the library has contracted the same company to perform state requirement, state required audit. Last year, the library paid about eighteen thousand dollars. Finally, this year, they set out the contract for bid. Recently, the board approved a new contract for the same, for the services for less than ten thousand dollars. In my opinion, as a taxpayer and a background business manager, in common sense, suggest this administration do properly manage their contracts. I suggest the board administration consider longer-term contracts to lower cost and with a thirty-day cancellation term without penalties. This allows the library to get out of the contract if needed. With these two suggestions, I guarantee you'll save taxpayers money and get a bit, and get better service for, from the business. I've asked this several times, and the board does not take any action. Respect, on May twentieth board meeting, board member, I'm just gonna use the first names. Patty called board member Caroline the B-word. Then she said, "I shouldn't have said that, I'm sorry, I actually meant it." Then slammed the papers down on the desk. That's respect, folks, and that's wrong.
And did you also mention what...
Myth is, I believe that's...
Okay, go ahead, talk.
Is my time?
Yes.
Thank you. Out first, on May twenty-second board meeting, board member Tim and Dennis were discussing Caroline's request to add comments for the minutes. During this discussion, Dennis lightly tapped Tim on the shoulder. Tim then yelled out, as if he was being attacked, "Do not touch me." The meeting was stopped to allow the board to calm down. And now Tim is the board president. I find Tim to be very combative and sometimes borderline bullying. Meeting minutes. In the past, trustees have been allowed to add and make corrections to meeting minutes before approval. At the May twenty-seventh meeting, President Karen denied her request. So I'll try to repeat request, I'll try to repeat that request, because it, it's in regards to public comment policy. Note, the company, the library, had reached out to other libraries to get feedback on their policy in order to update ours. Caroline stated as follows, "Director, Karen, the thirty-one libraries contacted were, were in outlying areas, which are not representative of our population and, or scope. I contacted local libraries that currently allow residents to provide public comment throughout the meeting. They were Park Ridge, Glenview, excuse me, Park Ridge Library, Glenview Library, and Northbrook Library." I agree with Caroline. The board recently updated a public policy that only allows the public to speak once, which is right now. The main reason, and the main reason I heard, "We'll be here till ten o'clock." That was the complaint. What sort of advice did you get with the board members again? I have been here for six of the meetings. We have never kept you here till ten o'clock. In fact, the meetings were mostly me, another time, two people, another time, three people. That's all we've had in attendance. I don't think we're gonna keep you here till ten o'clock. Can you be surprised how little comments that we would have? So I asked this, this board to put it back on the agenda and give us a voice. We matter. I have one more suggestion.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
It's amended to...
Nope.
I'll take it off the...
No.
Okay.
Time is up. Well, do you want the rules applied, everybody, bully to everybody, or just special for you?
Wow.
I'll read it down.
That's fine. Well, as a bully, I take it on my prerogative. Patty, do you want to respond to Mr. Gaudí's account?
You know what, I was responding to the fact Carolyn was, in my opinion, fooling a staff member, even though she feels that particular staff member isn't a staff member.
Does that allow you to call her a B-word?
No, I said I was sorry.
This is allowing her to comment.
I said I was sorry, I used the word. But in my opinion, that's how she was acting.
We are not allowing us, the public to discuss, okay?
And I realized I was wrong, and I shouldn't have used the word.
Patty, you have a question. All right, and as far as my conduct with Dennis, he has done that before to me. It was a very patronizing movement, I told him not to do it. And at that time, maybe I lost my temper a little bit. Uh-huh, well, it happens, right? But when somebody touches me like that in a threatening manner, as I, I took it to be threatening, it is my prerogative to decide how I react to this sort of thing. And I told him not to do it, pure and simple. So I'm sorry you thought I was bullying Dennis, but I was not. All right, who's next? Jeanette Mathias?
Hi, I'm Jeanette, former library trustee, current village trustee. I just want to start by saying I was appalled when I watched budget meeting of May twenty. The budget meeting is the most important meeting of all. You have an eight million dollar budget, and your fiduciary duty is to protect taxpayers' with spending. It seems you have no regard for the taxpayer. All of you on the board may have more money than you know at the moment, and spending is no object, but a lot of Niles residents struggle. And Tim, for you to say you don't see Niles suffering and requested Carolyn to get her statistics was wrong. If you're passionate about your position, you would do your own research. Niles has a lot of seniors or closures, and those who live check to check. Just look at the state of Illinois. July alone, gas taxes doubling, license plate stickers going up anywhere from fifty to a hundred and a quarter. A budget meeting should be line by line to possibly lower specifically. You may need to have more than one meeting to do it right. The village has two to three, two to three hours at a time. And Patty, for you to call another board member the B-word, and then again to say, "I'm sorry, I should not have said it, but I meant it," is not professional.
True, you're an elected official.
True, I agree with it.
Well, you're an elected official. You could have been removed from that meeting for that, but it would have taken the board to approve your removal. In a budget meeting, board members ask a lot of questions, and there is no limit on how many they can ask in any board meeting in order to get the answers for themselves and the taxpayers for the reason of the spending. You also stated that you did not want to be here all night. I took the same oath you did, and I don't remember it saying, "You attend a meeting from seven to seven-thirty with a half-hour break." A meeting takes as long as it takes to accomplish what you're discussing and voting on. And then you keep track, who does most of the talking? Are you concentrating on the discussion? Then you said, "If at a budget meeting, you should talk about the budget." In a budget meeting, anything to do with the spending and money is talking budget. And Karen being president, you did nothing to stop it, stop Patty for her behavior, but you did stop a board member several times by interrupting or saying, "Let's move on." Susan, for you to say you were being attacked and stopped asking questions meant you weren't prepared. And that's fine, there's times you're not, or anybody is. But a director should be prepared for a budget meeting. If a question is asked, you don't have the answer... If a question is asked, you don't have the answer, just say, "I don't have the answer at this time, but we'll get it to the person who asks the question." And how can you put a dollar amount in the budget for signage without having a cool per estimate of the cost? What if the budgeted amount is too much? Do you feel then you have more money to spend? Or if it is not enough money, where does the extra come from? The general fund? Trustee Martin and Derblich, well, former trustee Martins and Derblich are correct. Committees should be formed to discuss programs, offered events, et cetera. Meet, discuss, come back with a recommendation to the board. Consider having a resident or two on the committee for their opinion on what they would like to see or have. In answer to Linda's statement on committees, when I was on the board, there was, I believe, four. I'm getting old, so I could be wrong. Technology, which never happened because it was dissolved. Buildings and grounds maybe had two meetings, special reserve, and employee benefit committee. Now, an example Dennis brought up, possibly discontinuing the van. This could be part of a committee discussing where does the van go, is there a schedule, what's the cost? And Tim, for you to say, "We will follow our procedure, make a motion, and vote." You cannot make a motion if it's not on the agenda. I did not see on the agenda, I moved for board approval to discontinue the van, and I did bring the agenda, and I don't see it anywhere on there. It will have to be added to a future agenda for discussion and possible voting. Another thing I would like to add is now that trustee Martin resigned. I would like to see a noticeful go out to select another trustee for the next election. So what I'd like is for all of you to just...
All right, our next speaker is Dave Caravona.
Hey, Dave Caravona, Niles, Illinois. This board has issues, and I can see why it becomes so heated, looking at the tapes, looking at the data. And of course, I have experience in this area as a main council trustee and working with others in the past. Number one, you have a library administration provided no data or analysis of the current year's spending to plan the 2019-2020 budget. But instead, the board received a typical Excel spreadsheet listing budget line items with their summary total amounts. That would drive me crazy first. Second, the one point nine million dollar capital plan includes one point seven million in new projects without any quotes, which whether or not required, should be sought as being the right fiduciary thing to do. Number three, the error of summarily approving blanket huge amounts of spending. Number four, the approximately four point six million in employee costs, which include a three percent raise, staff membership dues of eighty-nine hundred dollars, quote-unquote professional development budgeted expense for fifty-four thousand, which includes travel to Tennessee, nice state. A lot of Illinois people are going there now. Carolyn pressed for online workshops instead of costly travel plans. The library being open on Sundays for four hours while those employees then working those Sundays being paid time and a half, with monies budgeted for this totaling eighty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, which is then added to all the quote-unquote entertainment expenses budgeted for the programs offered on those Sundays. Feel the heat? I'm feeling it if I was a trustee. There are being, number five, there are being part-time positions that in addition to salary, they receive IMRF benefits, sick days, vacation days, and medical insurance. Number six, the additional employment positions sought by the library director are no longer evaluated or subject to prior approval by this library board. This decision-making authority, which has been relinquished by this board, contrary to the law, in my opinion, needs to be taken back by the board. Whether you keep that responsibility or you pass it off to someone else, you're responsible. The buck stops here. Number seven, that the consolidated income statement dated April thirtieth, May board packet, shows a one point seven million dollars in surplus, which the library cannot possibly properly actually need to spend in the last five months of and by year end. Plus, assets in cash on hand totaling approximately ten million dollars equals no reason for increasing budget, no reason for increasing future levels. Now, on top of all that happening during that meeting, eight, as to the majority of the board pushing as the four twenty nineteen-2020 strategic plan projects listed in the budget, the executive director A stated she had no cost data to provide to the board for these four projects. B, the strategic plan timeline includes many more projects with associated costs for saying not included in this budget. Then on number nine, the notification by the executive director that the program costs for 2019-2020 will be higher because Friends of the Library no longer handle certain costs, which total about seventy-six hundred dollars allegedly. But at the same time, the board's holding ten thousand dollars in book sales from Friends of the Library that they took from Friends of the Library. That money can be used to offset even that expense. And if I was sitting at this board hearing this, I would be having a problem. Denial of Carolyn's request, number ten, for a copy of the compiled 2018-2019 program report to review outcomes and plan for next year's programs by the executive director, who stated, "Hey, this report, Carolyn, is no longer available." Number eleven, that there are numerous programs in the library's Chapter One, quote-unquote, there being a need that the board not increase and should decrease the number of programs made up and then funded by the library over objections. Those objections came by from Carolyn and Dennis. The rest of the board, no, silent. There was a, number twelve, there was a lack of review of any data as the board voted to temporarily approve ordinance nineteen dash oh one, allowing for a 2019-2020 budget of eight point four million dollars. And again, as I spoke about earlier today, this is an increase from 2015 when your spending was five point nine million, 2016 when your spending was six point eight million, 2017 when your spending was six point nine million, 2018 when your spending was seven point three million, and now we're going up to eight point four. This is going to cause a lot of heat at this table for someone who's conscious of being a trustee. A trustee is an auditor. If you're not auditing, get out. If you don't want to do your job, get out. Don't silence voices. Don't accuse someone of assault and of being afraid of someone when you clearly look at that tape. That's false. To silence the voice, you want to silence the message. Don't make an environment so miserable for a trustee that they have to go ahead and walk out here or compromise on their principles. That's why, again, I call for this board being merged into the Village of Niles board, the Village of Niles taking over this responsibility. Thank you.
Yes. May I just correct that?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. I just wanted to say for the record, since you referred to our just giving a spreadsheet, that board actually received a fifty-one-page packet of information regarding the budget. And that every meeting received probably twenty pages of information on spending. The board had a great deal of information to work with.
I also thought that didn't somebody mention they felt the part-time people were under IMRF? I don't believe that's true, right?
Some of them are.
Just some of them, right? You've had them on the level list.
If they're under thirty hours, they're not, are they?
It's twenty.
Carolyn, do you want to say something?
Yes, I do. Regarding the thirty-some-page document where you see people called the budget, I think we talked about that. And when I went through it, what it consists of are charts, pie charts and graphs that just repeat numbers that are already in that spreadsheet. And the only information included was definition of the word fines or definition of the word revenues and definitions of all kinds of other library terms. A Webster dictionary is not a budget document. So it may have been thirty or fifty pages, but that's all it included. There was no data in there at all for analysis.
Yeah, this is just...
I have it right here. It's just...
All right, all right.
We can pass the copy out.
All right, next person, I'm sorry, have we had a ten-minute? Tish?
Tisha.
Tisha.
Tisha, yeah. That's right.
Okay.
Another thing I would like to add, a noticeful go out to seat another trustee until the next election. Pick the most qualified and interested person for the position. Do not waste someone's time by having them come in if you already have your minds made up who the person is going to be. Programs, the library director Susan Lumpi recently admitted she does not track library program costs and attendance. I see this as poor management, and we, the taxpayers, are paying for it. This board should never accept a large amount such as one point five million without quotes to back it up. Okay, as an Niles resident, I am disappointed and embarrassed as two board members behaved on two occasions. Number one, at the budget meeting, another, a board member called another board member a very inappropriate name. Really, the video is all over Facebook. Number two, at the regular monthly board meeting, multiple events unfolded from a face-to-face confrontation, which have almost looked like punches could have been thrown or the cops being called. Then there was a back and forth about getting sworn in, sitting or standing, and of course, standing, who sits being sworn in. It was very uncomfortable witnessing all of these events. Board members should never behave like that. In conclusion, you are responsible to be professionals. You need to work together as a team as you represent the very people that elected you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tisha. Tisha?
Tisha.
Tisha. So in response to the pick the most qualified and already chosen, so we haven't even started soliciting interested people, I don't know of anybody who's already made a decision that wants to replace Dennis, so it's going to be an open process. We have one last.
Kevin.
You're not on here, Kevin?
Kevin.
Come in.
All right.
Come in.
Kevin, this is my first.
Oh, hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. Right, just right here.
This is my first time attending the library board meeting. I'm here out of concern for the lack of professionalism by some of the board members towards other board members who choose to ask questions about such things as budget items, question why the actions are being pushed forward without discussion. It is appalling the amount of disrespect for not just getting along. My second concern I have is regarding some programs and events by the library, such as the sixtieth anniversary of the library. It's typical such events are come at times like twenty-fifth, fiftieth, and seventy-fifth year, et cetera. Why the sixtieth? Prior to this was another program, the Polish Heritage Celebration. A huge banner hung outside the entrance made me wonder, how much did this cost and who paid for it? I inquired to an employee if other cultures were going to be getting the same attention, to which I was told, no. Finally, I find it difficult to understand why money is spent on some facility repairs but others are areas are neglected, such as peeling paint on the entrance of the arch. I believe last summer you had the exterior of the building painted, but yet if you walk towards that arch, you see peeling paint. So I don't know if they're coming back, the contractor or not. And I want to say for the past four years, I walk along the front of the library, and on the flowerbed is this stone that has been sitting there, lifted up. And I would assume it would have been taken care of at the time when the renovation was done, but it still hasn't been taken care of. And I mentioned this to some of the maintenance people, and, you know, nothing ever seems to be done about it, so... That's it.
We do have a schedule for painting the arch, correct?
Contracts already signed. Contracts already been signed.
Contracts have been signed. Kevin, wait, wait one second. So we've got a contract for the arch to paint it.
Okay.
Do you know anything about the...
The weather's been bad, but that's one of the reasons why they have to paint it.
Right.
Well, it just would have been painted last year.
Yeah, well.
And the stone is where?
It's right in the front where that, the double doors, I don't know if that's a utility room or something. But if you walk down, you see this one langston sitting up on an angle.
Okay.
So, like five dollars worth of mortar.
Take care of it. Thank you. We have one member, Suzanne, is still here? She's not here for the general, but apparently she's going to come in. All right, that concludes the public comments. Thank you all.
Sure. I'm sorry, did you talk for the treasurer's?
I have not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Thank our speaker. Next item is the treasurer's report, treasurer's report, Patty?
I'm here.
Sure. Greg, you want to make some comments?
So, may I see eleven points of fiscal year, almost ninety-two percent are within the budget. Overall expenditures of the library are about eighty-three percent of the budget, so we're doing pretty well. Revenues are a hundred and four percent of budget on page twelve. Fines, a hundred and twenty percent of budget, replacement tax, ninety-three percent of budget. I think that's where that's going to stay. I don't think we're going to get any more payments. Investment income is a hundred and seventy-two percent of budget, and passport income remains strong at a hundred and forty-eight percent. Salaried on page twelve are slightly under budget at eighty-nine percent. On the next page, page thirteen, library materials, same as last month, slightly higher than budget but are expected to even out at the end of the year. Library operating expenses on thirteen are at seventy-nine percent. The overall K R R is running under budget. Page fourteen, general administration expenses are at seventy-four percent of relative budget. Page fourteen as well, employee fringe benefits are pretty much on budget. Utilities are in budget, capital expenditures, special reserve is a forty-three percent. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve the payment of bills for operating expenses of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-one cents, and payroll expenses of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents, and special reserve expenses of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, for a total monthly expense of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents. This is including mileage reimbursement to trustee Carolyn Driblick for attendance at the trustee events. And the reason I'm pointing that out, Carolyn and everybody else, there's a Illinois statute now that board members have to approve any reimbursements to trustees. So we do need to specifically approve that. You know, that's why we're specifically mentioning. If there was a forty-seven dollar, if you see on page seventeen, there's a forty-seven dollar thirty-three cent reimbursement to Carolyn. For Carolyn, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's for mileage for a couple of events you went to.
I think that's what it says, right?
I believe so, yeah, okay. Anyway, so do I have a motion on the approval of these bills?
Motion.
Thank you, Diane, second, one of the seconds. All right, Diane, do you have anything to say on this?
No, I'm fine.
Linda?
No.
Carolyn?
I'm fine with that.
I have nothing to say on this, Carolyn.
What events did Carolyn go to for which she's collecting, trying to collect money?
Carolyn?
Do we not have the form I filled out?
Can you? What you, uh...
One was in January, up in, um... I don't know, I was with you with that one in January.
I didn't ask for my money for it, no. Okay, fine.
Well, if you didn't ask for money, that's your prerogative. And then the other one was in, I think, Oak Brook. They were both trustee conferences.
Patty?
I have no problems.
All right. Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Diane?
First, Carolyn?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
And Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Next item in the agenda is the director's report. Susan?
All right. First off is, as you know, there is an event every year called the Nile Block Party. Last year, as part of the block party, they had an activity where people could purchase ducks, a duck race. I don't exactly understand it because I wasn't there, but the benefit, the money that was raised by selling the ducks went to Niles Family Services. And so, Ariane is our connection with the, Ariane Carey, the head of youth services is our connection with the block party, and she just wondered what the board would think about having one day where we sold ducks, our stuff, in the, or allowed somebody from the village to come sell ducks in the best of you like on a Saturday or something. Partly because we have such a great relationship with Niles Family Services. They are on call for us whenever we have a patron who is struggling. We try to work very closely with them and they have come and, you know, presented at programs and things like that, so it would be just a little way to give back to them. But that definitely would be, you know, something that the board would want to be behind. We would not want to be selling things in the best of you if you didn't support that. Just kind of wanted to take the temperature on that.
They want to come and sell.
It's really, it was Ariane's idea.
Permission to use?
It would be, yeah. And we don't normally allow people to sell in the best of you, so.
Ducks?
No. No, no, no. Oh, like rubber duckies.
The rubber ducks with their wings, the rubber ducks. Oh, I'm like, wow, okay, yeah.
Well, I don't know. I want to just, I'll voice my opinion on that, though. I guess I wouldn't want to set a precedent because now where do we draw the line? I think some of them, I just heard Girl Scouts, you know.
Well, we have done that in the past and we stopped doing that this year because the board has expressed some concern about selling.
I have concerns about that too because I'm sure it's a great charity and I have no doubt about that, but there are so many charities who might then ask to sell things in our library. And then I just don't know how if we allow one, we can then start disallowing other ones. So, I have that concern.
Can I just ask one question? Is this during the village block party or is this?
Yeah. Well, I guess they're sold in advance and then I guess it's literally a race in water of some kind, I don't know.
So, there's gambling in it, too?
So, could we pass them and they just sell them at some block party instead of our library?
I'm sure they are going to do that. It was just a way to raise a little more money. They, I'm sure they're sold all kinds of places. Okay, well, it sounds like that's a no.
Well, I don't know.
Or reluctant, we can say.
I have no opinion. I'm personally not seeing anything wrong with it, but I also understand that there, it might be setting a precedent.
I feel like saying.
Reservation. I, I think if they want to sell in a break room and employees want to sell to other employees.
Okay.
If you generally let employees select from other employees in the break room, I don't know if that's something.
Not typically, but I don't think that would be a bad precedent. I would project it out. Okay, thank you. I just want to remind you that the Fourth of July march is coming up. Sasha is going to need a headcount very soon. If anybody needs t-shirts or anything like that, you could either march or ride in the van or there's, you know, a booth at the park if you would prefer not to be actually walking, but to actually help me on the booth, you could do that.
What, come back with those?
I think usually have little kids games, you know, like bows and buckets, things like that, so it would be doing that kind of thing. So, if you decide you'd like to do that, please let me know within the next day or two.
I have it. We're using the same shirts as last year.
I think we are. If you have a shirt from last year, we are, and then we use those, right? Yeah. And of course, trustee events.
And those are the ones that say red, white, blue.
No. It's like four icons on the front and it has an A on the back.
Pretty chill.
All right. All right. I wanted to just let the board know, as Dr. Ashwell said, we do have a little bit of disrepair up in the front. The other thing that's a little bit of disrepair are the veterans' benches. We are aware of it. I wanted you to know, first of all, I contacted the person that runs Boy Scouts at St. John for Buff because they have had Eagle Scouts a couple of times, that have refinished the benches, and so he's going to try to find us an Eagle Scout. I don't know if he'll be successful or not, and I think Dave is also trying.
I'm a school scout leader. There is more involved politically in scouts in order to get, and things the kids have to prove and do to get it approved through scouts, otherwise they don't get credit.
Okay.
So, even if he finds a kid who's willing to take it on, it might take months before that kid gets approved from Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
Because I've taken girls through that, which is called the Gold Award.
That's good to know. So, I did want you to be aware that we are aware of it and Dave is also trying to figure out some way to get it taken care of. It's obviously a nice project for a kid to accomplish. It's a real feeling of accomplishment and a real contribution on what we have. I just wanted to point out a couple of things from my written board report. Right at the beginning, it talks about our new app. Has anybody gotten a chance to download it yet? Interested?
No.
Yeah. So, take a look and let us know if you like it. We're just kind of testing it out, seeing what kind of response it gets. Many of the staff have tried it now. We all like it and it's pretty easy to use. And the other thing I just wanted to point out, and you probably saw already, are the pictures of our team librarian, Rachel, at the Culver School graduation. And that was just a few of the pictures that were taken. She just has all these kids that are just crazy about her to the point where.
And she's crazy about that, too.
Yeah. So, I just thought that was, you know, she's kind of turning into one more rock star and that's pretty neat. I wanted to let you know that we have had three memorial things lately. We have had a family, sisters of a library patron who used to come and use our computers every day, and he loved the library so much that they wanted to make a memorial contribution for him, and so Dave is working on it, and Diane also did the ordering on this, a memorial bench for him. So, when that's all set up, I'll put that in the director's report when I find you'd like to know that. We have another.
Sorry.
It's right over here in the, I don't know if you can see, it's on Oakden Court, right, kind of right by the east parking lot. Yeah, it'll be a nice little, little area, it's gonna be very pretty. We also had a woman who loved the library very much, and so her family asked if they could have her sort of a wake or a little memorial type thing in one of our meeting rooms. And we normally would say no, that, you know, we've said no birthday parties and things like that, they have a lot of mess potential, but she says basically for, you know, like them to share their memories and have a slideshow, and that just seemed pretty much like a regular meeting, but I thought it was very touching that that's, that they wanted to have it here at the library because she loved the library so much. Her name was Catherine Foss. And we have third donation from a family in, first of children's DVDs, that's somebody named Mary Ann Martin. And I believe we have someone else is going to put in their written material that you can make donations to the library in memory of this person. So, when I know more about that, I'm going to include it. The last thing I want to.
I'm sorry, would you thank them off of the board?
Of course. We always thank.
Did you have a name for the first person that we're going to have the memorial bench?
Stanley Zeez, something very long. I will put all of these things into written material.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I want to tell you is not a good thing. It is that a giant publisher, Hachette, has changed their ebook model, lending model, so that now instead of us just being able to buy an ebook and our patrons being able to check it out over and over, now they're putting it on a two-year metered model, which means that after two years, our license runs out. And they're, and that they're not the purports to do this, but it's just ebooks are really expensive. I think people always think, oh, ebooks, we're not going to need a library anymore. The fact is, they're really expensive. So, the way this would work is they're lowering their prices a little bit on individual titles, and the way they're excusing it is by saying, people won't want the same books after two years, so you will, you'll have more money to spend. But, you know, obviously, that's not always true. So, it's disappointing and unfortunately, it is the trend. So, you know.
To take care of it.
So, you have to re-buy the same book over and over, every two years, essentially, for the same books.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And you have a book only a certain number of people can use at a time.
Yes, right? Well, the ones that are on, Hoopla is multi-use, many people can be on anything on Hoopla, but the ones at Overdrive, it's one copy, one person at a time. So, yeah.
I just was wondering the name of this publisher?
Hachette, H-A-C-H-E-T-T-E. Very big, one of the big five.
So, at Overdrive, we have books from many publishers in the one, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
How, how would our, so our system, they would just, they would fold that book?
It would just disappear. Yeah. And then the other annoying thing about that is not only do you have to pay for another copy of the book, but it does mean more staff time going in to keep track of whether we have lost access to some.
You don't get a notification that it's being taken out?
Well, you might, but then that person still has to go in and be doing the reordering and everything and checking the circulation and seeing if they want to reorder it, and it's, you know. All of the selection process has to go into that now. So, and we have extremely competent people doing that, but it's just one more thing that we have to do. And like I said, my concern is that it's a trend.
I was, I was going to say, we, at the high school, we do get a notification, and yes, then someone has to go and we have one person go in, check to see how many times that book was actually checked out. Is it worth to reorder or not?
Yeah.
It is, it's just a process. But we are seeing the trend of more books are metered now instead of that you just purchased, but usually it's a one-year. Actually, I'm, I mean, it's a two-year. I'm like, well, that's a, that's a little bit of a yaszy, I guess. Because usually for us, it's a one-year, so.
I'm sort of just maybe fair that, too, because I understand when you're looking at circulation, that a couple of years, you might have a reorder, but some groups like Bible Call, we never choose a book unless it's over two years old. There's more copies available. And that, and so, that would really hurt groups like ours because there would continue to be fewer copies available even as time went by. So, what books do we get on Overdrive as opposed to on Hoopla?
Overdrive is, is much, much larger. It's like, they have access to most of the available ebooks and the audio books. Hoopla is much, much smaller.
So, but would this eventually affect them? Where are you going to?
That is a good question. They might eventually have to change their model, which would make it much less something to use, but so far so good on that.
Could we get to a spot where the physical book would be more economical than actually be?
The physical book is more economical than ebooks now, yeah. Ebooks are usually $30 to $60 a piece, and the audio is even more.
Bring the books around.
Right, right. Well, you know, we have many, Niles is, generally speaking, a community that is slow to adapt, you know, adopt new formats. So, we had VHS for many years, for a lot of libraries have gotten rid of their VHS because our patrons were still using it. So, we continue to buy books. It's just a matter of, you know, with the DVDs and with the music, those things are starting to disappear and are not going to be available for too much longer, but books, I think, are still, you know, print books, I think, are still going to be around. And they say that millennials actually prefer the print books.
Yeah, way, way millennials.
All right. I did have a video I was going to show you tonight, but I think this meeting is, you know, you have quite a bit of business and I will save that for another night. Thank you.
Can I just mention one thing about your report? And this is in reference to the databases and downloadable, so Susie told the, on page 38, Kathleen actually did bring costs down from $12,000 to $9,000. She saved $2,500 and also saved another $1,900 in another product purchase through her fiscal awareness. For those that think we don't look at our budget continuously, I know your staff constantly does that because you have evidence, and you told us about it, every single report, there's one or two people that indicate their fiscal responsibility, and I think it's important to know that, and I know that you do as well.
Thank you. Yeah, she does fantastic job. She is, she is diligent and tenacious.
Very good.
Next item on our agenda.
Excuse me, are we finished with the director's report?
Do you have anything else?
I did have a question. I didn't know we ended.
Yeah.
It's called S O S H A.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Karen, did you say what page you're on?
Oh, sorry, 44, actually, last page.
Safety and OSHA compliance.
Okay. Mentioned that you're planning next year's safety training activities. Are these activities or are they measures to be compliant? I mean, are they training? What is that actually?
No, they, any issues that we have with compliance, they take care of right away. Actually, three of the safety committees are sitting right there. Oh, I would like to say.
It is training.
It is?
It is training for the staff. We did quite a bit of training last year, first aid and bloodwork pathogens and mental health. So, you know, all the activities are not always fun, but.
Does this also have to do with like COVADAM and all of that stuff?
Yeah, so you should practice COVADAM during staff training.
Okay, well, I just was wondering what it stood for. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we done? The director's report? I think so. All righty, the next item. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 19-02, inordinate ordinance setting the schedule of meetings of the board of trustees of the Niles Main District Library for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2019 and ending June 30th, 2020. Karen made a motion. I hear a second. Linda? Any discussion on our schedule? Karen?
I was just wondering if you, Susan, are not having an inclusion look at calendar to see if these conflict with any major holidays or.
No, Thanksgiving's late this year.
Other problems that sometimes weren't in tune. We checked, they're all good.
No? Diane, anything?
They're fine, isn't it, you know? Yeah, I mean, I just looked at the holidays, those to me would be the big ones for most people.
Sure. Diane, Linda, Carolyn?
I'm good.
Great. Can I have a roll call?
Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I hear a motion to approve the recommended price tags to be charged for health insurance beginning on July 1st, 2019 and ending on June 30th, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Diane?
Karen.
Diane, thank you. We got this information on page 54, and Greg, can you please clock us through this?
That'd be helpful. Thank you. So, the policy that the library has in place to charge employees for healthcare insurance is as follows. For single coverage, the employee pays 10% of the overall cost of the health insurance, and for coverage above that, the employee pays 25%. So, if you look at, if you look at the monthly price tags, oh, you can see that in the, in the chart about the middle of the page, okay? So, all of these numbers are calculated using that algorithm. The, if you look to the bottom of the page, you can see that the cost for single coverage actually decreased by $5 a month, and that's comparing column one and column three in the, in the chart. Employee plus spouse went up $5, employee plus child went up $39, these are our monthly numbers, and employee plus family went up $55. Overall, when you look at the expected, expected mixture of people that we expect in the healthcare plan, our overall cost is decreasing approximately 2%. So, you know, I, I think we're seeing some good experience. You know, we are seeing some retirements which, which help with the healthcare line because if you retire, you're, you know, you're. because if you retire, you're, you know, you're a higher risk, you're a higher risk for health insurance as viewed by Blue Cross Blue Shield and the health industry overall. And then you're usually replacing that person with somebody that's a little bit earlier in their career who is less at the risk. So that causes us to pay a little bit less in health insurance. This is the second year in a row that overall that number has decreased.
I remember this last year.
Yeah, yeah, it's an anomaly. And when we first started looking at it in secondary research, it looks like the overall cost is going to be subject to medical inflation, which this year is running, you know, six percent or so. So it's quite a change.
Okay. Any comments on this one? I'll start with Karen again.
Just want to clarify, you say, of course, the individual amount is going down. The other ones are going up. But do most of our employees just take the individual?
Overwhelmingly, yes.
So did you, do I understand you say that our overall costs are actually going to go down?
That's what we expect, right.
Because, so a few of our employees are actually taking like the employee spouse family or child.
I think there are three or four employees that take the employee plus, you know, spouse or employee plus family. And because of the overwhelming number of people take the single coverage with it, you know, that savings, you know, builds up and then overall we get the savings.
Okay, great, thank you.
Patty?
No.
Diane?
One more question.
Linda, Carolyn?
Yeah, I had a question. I notice you list the monthly price tags for the employees' payments. Could you tell us what the library's portion would be monthly payable for these different breakdowns?
Yeah, roughly, if you look at, if you look at what the financial statement on page, I think it's on page fourteen, no, I'm sorry, fifteen. And you look at the group health insurance, our monthly actual is about thirty-eight thousand dollars. We expect our monthly actual going forward to be slightly less than that.
Okay, so.
And I just want to point out, that's net of the amounts collected from employees under the price tag program.
Okay, could you provide me with what the library's monthly cost is for this breakdown? Employee, employee plus spouse, so we can see what it costs the employee and then we can see what the library's portion is.
By what?
If you could email that to me, sure, and to just correlate with these breakdowns.
Sure.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Great. I did have a question in this, Greg, too, or who do we have healthcare with?
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Is there any need to, or do you look at other providers? Is there, how does that process work?
So every year, what we do is, is we take it to market, get the best prices that we can. You know, very often we get mobile bids from alternative providers. And then when you start to dig into it, you know, you find out that they want to have everything go to underwriting. And what that means is, and it protects them. What that means is they look at each individual person and their family and their medical history as available for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then they price it. Very often they price equal to or higher than Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, you know, these two years ago, you know, they would step in and they'd try to buy the, buy the business at lower rates and so forth. And then in a matter of a year, maybe two years, you'd be right back or higher than where you started. What differentiates Blue Cross Blue Shield and what makes us excited to be with them is the, you know, the depth and breadth of their.
Services.
Well, not their services, but, you know, the doctors that accept it. And, you know, if you get a bill from a doctor for a procedure, let's say it's a thousand dollars, just a big round number. On the strength of Blue Cross Blue Shield's negotiations, that price immediately drops significantly. Could be as low as, let's say, five hundred dollars or four hundred dollars. And then they adjudicate the claim after that, you know, apply to the doctor board and so on. With some of the other, with some of the other providers, you know, they're not as strong negotiated prices. So what happens is they're bearing more of the cost and that gets rolled into your rates down the road.
Sure.
And, you know, the network is not as robust as Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Great, thank you so much.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure, Carolyn.
Based on our staffing pool, with more of our employees being like singular employees, are we gravitating towards being in a better position to look elsewhere in the future as opposed to staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Well, I don't think the, you know, the type of insurance level has anything to do with making us better or worse.
Isn't it age that makes a difference?
It's experience.
Experience in employees?
So if you have, if you have somebody that has heart issues and it's an ongoing case, that might, you know, that might cost them a year like three hundred thousand dollars.
When you said experience, it sounded like where you worked before or something.
So are you saying, so I'm thinking older employees are usually at a higher cost, at the higher end for insurance?
Well, as I said, statistically, they are more likely to use the insurance.
But what I'm trying to say is, with our staffing pool, we have so many new employees, are we gravitating towards a time when we might be able to go elsewhere and get a better deal?
Yeah, I don't know, that's hard to answer. In any particular year, Carolyn, it would depend on what our insurance experience is. So if you have all young people, they're all twenty-five, and don't generally view as not having a lot of issues, but somebody has, gets something more of a multiple sclerosis.
Sure, I understand.
Well, I mean, for a long period of time. What that, what that's going to do is that's going to cause our experience in terms of cost to be very high.
Right, I understand.
So they'll adjust us higher than, than what the community rating that we're currently in takes.
Are we grandfathered into this plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as a matter of fact, if we make any significant changes, we will pay significantly more.
Could, maybe we should consider, you know, discussing the different options that you tend to come up with or maybe we could even bring some suggestions too. Because I know other areas, other localities are also grandfathered and they seem to be at a position where they can now look elsewhere and obtain better pricing. But I know it has a lot to do with your staffing pool and medical issues and what have you. But I think maybe at least next year, before we get to this point where we're just voting, maybe we could just consider what some options might be or find out what some of these others are doing. That was my thought.
Linda?
Yeah, I just, because I don't remember doing that for a while. And I know we had done that in, yes, like, I don't know, a while back, maybe six, seven years ago. Have you done it since then?
We did it, we did it my second, we did a full underwriting in my second year here.
Yeah, I remember we had done it once. And because we had such a good deal from Blue Cross Blue Shield and we were kind, yeah, like we were grandfathered in, that nobody even came close. But yeah, it doesn't hurt, we haven't done it in a while. But I just remember that we had a really, one of the best deals we could have. But that doesn't mean that that changed, changes, so.
So that'd be like in the, in the April meeting or the?
Yeah, generally, certainly March meeting or something.
Then at least we know, yeah, we've done the best.
Can you, I don't know, indicate that March twenty?
It might have to be earlier than that because it would be a process because the staff office has to fill out really detailed medical histories for in that process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because as I said, they look at each individual employee and do underwriting at that moment.
Well, can we bring it up January to discuss whether or not we want to go that route?
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about it anytime that you wanted on the agenda.
Right, because of all the medical laws.
Sometimes what we're doing, sometimes what we have to be careful of is going too early. So if they only have six months' experience and they're developing the current year, we're not going to get very current pricing at that point.
So.
Blue Cross Blue Shield generally doesn't talk to us until, until much closer to the end of the year.
Our fiscal year.
Yeah, well, our plan year, which mirrors the fiscal year.
Patty, is there some other?
I know through us, through work, that all comes up in November, the insurance stuff and all of that.
Yeah, you're probably on a calendar year.
Yeah. But here it would be more so now.
Okay, that's interesting.
All right, so let's maybe put it out in January to revisit. Thank you. All right, Diane, can I have any roll call, please?
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Uh, yes. It's my guess. Next, I need a motion to approve the recommended purchase of liability and workers' compensation insurance in the total amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. Karen?
Second.
Patty, second. Sixty, page, information on page fifty-five. Any discussion we need on this, Greg, from you on this? It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the, we're up one point two nine percent, you know, which is a, just shy of eight hundred dollar difference over last year. You know, if you had asked me what I expected the prices to be, I would have expected workers' comp to increase. But it's actually decreased significantly and then the other insurance products have increased slightly. So, you know, I'm very pleased, especially with the workers' comp because we have, we have had some accidents around the library that have had to open up cases with Hartford. And we seem to be doing it better. I think the old cases are falling off too, in some respects.
Karen?
What's commercial prime? Is it employee tax or something else?
It's like directors and officers.
Oh, okay.
Patty?
I don't know. I'm looking at the prices, I look too much on target, I don't think. I mean, I don't know.
All right, Diane?
Looks acceptable.
Linda?
I don't know.
Carolyn?
I was wondering, what's our umbrella covered?
So, you mean a dollar note?
It's five dollar.
And then, how many years does it take before any incidents are taken off of drop off of workman's comp? Is it three years, five years, how long?
You know, I don't apologize if I have to.
Have we had any current ones, like in this previous year that we can?
Uh, we have not had any recent ones. We did have an employee try to submit a claim, that he no longer works for us.
Oh.
And we don't, we don't know what the ultimate outcome of that is going to be. But so far, the insurance company has not agreed to accept it as a legitimate claim.
So you're saying an employee who used to work for us had an incident and then tried to file a claim? Is that what they're saying?
It means that prior to his departure, he had a condition which he felt should be covered by workers' comp. And during the time of his employment, he had hired an attorney to pursue a claim and that is still outstanding and he no longer works for us.
But if they determine it was due to his job, then will be liable.
Yeah, if it's during his employment, period of employment, then, you know, obviously that insurance is free.
All right, and then I didn't hear what the definition of commercial prime was?
It's like directors and officers' insurance that protects you.
To sue, so if someone sued us?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, gosh. All right, well, thank you. That's what I thought you said, I'm thinking that, Kathy. Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, Diane, could you take it one, please?
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Diana? Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Yes. All right, we had the budget hearing.
I would like to motion to table adoption of ordinance nineteen oh-three, twenty nineteen twenty budget and appropriation until we're able to obtain quotes for the one point nine mil capital projects and reassess them.
You can't table it because it hasn't been moved yet.
You can table before or after.
You know, you have to make the motion and then the motion could be tabled.
It's not my knowledge, but if that's what you want to do.
I've looked it up.
We've had the budget hearing on the budget earlier tonight. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen dash zero-three and ordinance providing for budget and appropriations for the Niles Main District Library, Cook County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty? Karen?
Second.
So now you make your motion, Karen.
Carolyn, you want to make another motion?
I'd like to table, I'd like to motion to table adoption, ordinance nineteen oh-three for the twenty nineteen twenty budget and appropriation until we can obtain quotes for the one point nine million in capital projects and then reassess them.
Which is the roof and something else, Carolyn? Was it mostly for the roof?
Well, the one point nine mil, there, no, there's, there's a whole litany of items.
Well, it's just if, if you like.
We have a, we have a capital projects list, two pages.
What page is that?
Oh, this is from the budget.
From the budget, okay.
It's passed out after. It's one nine seven one six four eight.
Before we get into a discussion, I would just go second.
We haven't made a motion on it yet. Uh, Karen, let's make a motion.
No, no, I want the motion to table. And excellent motion, second of the motion table dies.
Well, no, you know what, I will second the motion because I believe we should have a discussion of whether or not we should table it.
I don't think.
Isn't that what seconding that means? We discuss whether or not we should table it? You're the lawyer.
I don't think you can discuss the motion to table.
You can't discuss the motion to table?
It's one of the things you can't discuss.
Boxing me in the corner, I guess.
So.
Uh, then I'm sorry, I'm thinking second, sorry, Carolyn.
So the motion to table dies because we don't have a second, is that it?
Apparently.
If there's no second.
Thank you. So are we ready to discuss the other?
The actual motion to table?
To approve, yes.
There was a second for that, was there?
There was a second, yes. So Karen motioned and Linda seconded. All right, so we will have our discussion again. But let's remind ourselves that anything that we've already approved as a board, we really shouldn't need to rediscuss unless there's new information that would substantially change anybody's vote on it. So in that light, we can start our, our discussion. But let's limit it to things that we haven't already approved as a board. So Carolyn, Karen, do you have any, any issue with that or any discussion?
No changes added since our meeting on May twentieth. And we have two other questions I wanted to ask on the twentieth. So I don't have any additional questions at this time.
You know what, and we can switch. You know what, and we can switch the order of, of going around the table, just for variety's sake. So Carolyn, why don't you go next?
I'm sure.
But who was second?
No, the, the process I want to implement is, is the person who makes the motion starts and then we go in an orderly fashion, but not necessarily the same order because, yeah.
Okay, I understand.
A couple of things, um, so with the capital projects for one point nine mil, which we do not have any quotes, um, it's hard to think we're going to approve them.
Well, do we have a sheet we can refer to the capital projects?
No, that was what you were given during your budget meeting.
Do you hear that?
I have one for me, but I'm sorry, I can't give it to you because I need to, it's two pages. It's from Greg.
Numbers.
It wasn't in the packet, Greg passed it out at the meeting.
Yeah, last week, yeah.
Yeah.
I have, is there a page number on it?
So the reason I think, um, these items should not be included in the budget is because we don't have quotes. And based on this engineering report that was discussed a couple of times this evening, the engineering report is actually recommendations for replacement when issues arise. Um, and I understand we paid sixteen hundred to nineteen hundred dollars for this report. And I, I've gone through some of it, not as thoroughly as others have. But, um, I mean, to hire someone to come into the library and to tell us that we need to replace the hot water heater in the future when it needs to be replaced is, is really senseless. Um, I understand there's mechanical, um, equipment that's included in here, but there's nothing in this report that says right now this all needs to be replaced and we're ready to put a roof for one point two into the budget. So the fact that we don't have quotes and we haven't even evaluated what we, what we need to do, I think we're just running to approve a budget that's unsubstantiated. And this, um, I wish all of you could have a copy of this engineering report. It's very insightful. One, I don't think we need to waste money on this because we have a maintenance man who's been here for a long time and there isn't much that he can ascertain walking around this building, especially since the report only tells us sometimes in, sometime in the future, you should spend all this money and do all that stuff. Well, well, I think we're, we know that. But right now, I, I'm saying that the budget should include these items in capital, um, projects because there, there aren't any quotes. And then there's a couple of other things, um, we talked throughout the year about hospitality. We do not have a hospitality line item. We have no idea what we spend on hospitality, but it is a consistent expense. So I would like to see the budget include some dollar amount that you plan on spending next year. I mean, that hasn't been identified either. And as far as programs, when I asked for an explanation, um, I was told there isn't one. But Susan, you mentioned that our programs are increasing in cost because Friends is not funding some of the expensive programs. So we kind of need some kind of data to understand what's going on.
I did tell you, I told you, I'm sorry, may I?
Um, why don't you finish with everything you, you want to listen to?
Okay, and well, the point is, that was a statement that you put into the budget document. So I'm just saying, it would help if I could see a breakdown of what the budgets or budget costs are for programs. And I know we were able to do this when Linda Weiss was director. I mean, we received a budget with a breakdown. I mean, we had adult services, they had all of their programs, all the costs. I mean, and it was, it was real straightforward. But for some reason, you don't find that anymore. So again, we don't even know what the cost is and we just have an eight point four million dollar budget. So that's, that's, you know, we're supposed to be about transparency and this is also questionable. And then a couple of other things, oh, IMRF. We talked about, what's it called, um, cash payments to employees who do not need our health coverage. So I think I heard something like it's forty dollars a paid period or a thousand dollars, um, a year per person. Well, um, I'm looking at the, um, breakdown for these payments. It looks like we've been in IMRF for three years and four months. And forgive me, but I call this padding IMRF. To call, um, cash payments that we give to employees' benefits is really not accurate. And we are padding IMRF by now, making them earnings so they can now be calculated for IMRF pension. But just in three years and four months, the total is twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty. And that's just dollars that were put into IMRF. Now, let's see what that's going to cost taxpayers over how many years? I mean, is it really necessary to do that? And I know we pointed out we saved money on a couple of, um, is it digital services? Instead of spending twenty, twelve thousand, we stayed, we spent nine thousand. So maybe we saved three grand, but here's almost thirty thousand. Okay, and, and again, I don't see why we have to put any more money into IMRF. We're already paying for IMRF based on earnings. Why call something else earnings? So these are reasons why I think this budget is nowhere near ready to be passed. And unfortunately, during the budget meeting, you know, I couldn't even get a question out, we're becoming a war. So I feel we have not done justice to reevaluate or evaluate this budget just once. And, you know, again, we owe it to the taxpayers who are going to be paying this bill and we're all about transparency, so we should do this.
Good, great. Uh, thank you. Let's see, should we answer some of the questions first or should we go around?
I, I'm good on these tracks.
You're going to lose track?
So if you don't mind, I'll address.
Okay, Susan, why don't you address it, please?
Uh, let's see, as for the hospitality line, we talked about that at the last meeting and I said that those expenses are part of our program expenses and part of our professional development meeting expenses. If you want them broken out, that can happen, but then you're not getting a complete picture of the program expenses.
We don't get it now. I have no idea what the cost for a program is.
Okay.
I cannot tell you what one of the programs costs though.
Well, wait, okay. So, uh, next month, I do plan on giving the board a presentation on our program strategy, an overview of the kinds of things we've had in the past and what we're planning for the coming year. So perhaps that will help clear that.
But I'm not interested in strategy, I'm interested in cost by program. So we can reassess them every year. And hospitality should be a, a line item of its own. It's food, it shouldn't be in professional development and it shouldn't be in programs.
Well, that's like saying that construction paper used in a children's craft should have its own line item instead of hanging in the programs.
Susan, anyone who handles the budget knows hospitality is its own line item.
Okay, well, that's decided by the board.
Yep, uh, and then you've asked about the IMRF cash payments and.
May I, uh, address that?
I was going to ask.
May I address the cash payment?
Sure.
So, um, uh, the way that IMRF is set up is that the, uh, compensation that is paid to employees and is forty dollars is part of that compensation uh, is included in their, uh, box one salaries and their W twos.
Because we, oh, bonus.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. It was, it was done, uh, from the actual start, um, April first, twenty, sorry, August first, April, uh, twenty sixteen. And, uh, when IMRF came out to audit, they said, hey, you're doing this and what we really need to do is, I think they had resolution six seventy-five on, on their, uh, on their account. We need to paper this transaction with board approval to make sure that everybody understands what's going on. So we went in front of the board with, uh, this resolution and explained that. And as it worked, it was passed and it made it official. So we, we passed that on to, uh, IMRF.
I have a question.
Uh, Carolyn, finish.
The way the program works is if an employee decides to source their health insurance somewhere else, you know, parents, you know, spouse, uh, the Affordable Care Act exchange, we pay them a thousand dollars, it's actually nine hundred and sixty dollars, um, over a year at forty dollars per paid period for twenty-four paid periods. Every year, there are approximately ten or eleven people who don't take our insurance. If they're taking single coverage, um, ten people would cost us an extra thousand dollars. If, since they go away and get their coverage from another source, we're spending ten and saving ninety. Um, that ten thousand dollars, as a whole, represents a cost to the library, to IMRF of, I'd say, five hundred and fifty dollars. Because it's, those are compensation dollars, you apply the contribution rate of five point three one percent to IMRF, uh, for IMRF, to those payments. So five percent of ten thousand is five hundred, five thirty-one is, is five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Anytime that will not apply?
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess over a hundred years, you have.
Twenty years or fifteen?
Fifty thousand dollars or something like that. But, um, uh, so that's the story. But the key is, the key is, is that the board has approved, uh, that by resolution, uh, sent to IMRF.
Okay, the key that I brought up, though, when you brought this to the board just a couple of months ago and it was an oversight that we didn't sign documentation, giving board approval to do this, I asked, when did, when was this initiated? You said it had to do with a previous resolution. I could not find it.
I don't recall. I don't recall.
Well, when we adopted IMRF, when did this?
Well, yeah, actually, Carolyn, this.
I'm not understanding.
I understand you're not understanding, but let me finish.
I am, I'm.
No, 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 no. This particular payment to employees has been discussed by the board and then we have made a decision to accept it.
Okay.
So let's not revisit it because we've already accepted it.
So then my point is, this board should not have approved in just three years, throwing another thirty thousand into IMRF.
Well, that's, uh, that, thank you for your opinion, yeah, but we did.
And, and the fact that we're saving money because some of the staff doesn't need insurance because they're covered elsewhere, doesn't mean we need to just give more money over.
I understand. I, I understand. But we've already discussed this particular issue. Let's not revisit it, just unless you have other information.
Yes, the information was it's actually twenty-nine thousand dollars, not just a few dollars.
Yes, so. We'll, we'll, we'll pass on this particular item because we've already discussed and approved it. Um, those were your issues and I think Greg and Susan has, have addressed those. Uh, I have no other, um, items on the budget that I would need to talk about. Karen?
Yeah.
Karen, Patty?
Um, the only thing pertaining to what she had asked about the, um, expense on, I, I'm taking it as the roof and so on, is, wasn't there, if I remember correctly, and I might be wrong, so I'm asking this, wasn't there where the roof was insured for a certain period of time that the company who put it on would come and do repairs?
Well, that's not insurance, it was warranty.
Well, warranty, I'm sorry.
It has a twenty-year warranty. Um, the, uh, the west roof is, has been out of warranty and we addressed, you know, leakages and spots and so forth, uh, throughout the year. The, uh, the west roof just came out of, I'm sorry, just, uh, the east roof just came out of, uh, warranty. So we're at a twenty, uh, twenty year. Um, the contents from, uh, from the engineers, um, were along the lines of, yeah, you might get a little more life out of this. One part, the part that's a little bit better, the part that is not, uh, that is older, um, you should probably consider replacing that soon.
Okay.
So it, so we decided to put, to put money in the budget, but, uh, without having a full understanding of the condition of the roof and we're going through that process now. To give you some dimensions, the roof on this building is, uh, in total, uh, is approximately forty thousand square feet. That's an acre, uh, actually, an acre is about forty-three thousand square feet. So this is pretty close to an acre of roof. Uh, now, by contrast, Mr. McCula brought something to our attention that you can get a roof for a hundred and two thousand dollars if you get an ice rink in the Park District. Um, that ice rink is about six thousand square feet. So, you know, what you would have to do is take that hundred thousand dollars and gross it up. Um, the other problem with the ice rink did is that it's a different standard than, uh, it's being built to a different standard than what we're required to build it. So the insulation under the, uh, rubber vent ring, uh, on the ice rink is an R twenty, which is basically how, how big is the blanket that surrounds, you know, that surrounds the structure. Uh, so they have an R twenty, uh, specification in their bid. We need to, according to the village code, uh, put in an R thirty. Okay. So what that involves at this point is, is putting, uh, coring the roof uh, at, at points to make sure that we understand what is under it and make the appropriate measurements and, and so forth and actually do, uh, a more thorough investigation. We in no way, shape or form are advocating that, um, the strength of the information that we have so far that we spend one point two million dollars. But we suggest that, uh, that the board appropriate that amount of money because, um, we don't know what we're going to find yet.
How soon can we find this out?
Uh, it's, you know, it's, it's a process. I mean, I, you know, until, and you really won't know until you go through a formal bidding process and release the specifications and, you know, so.
What's this coring process, for example? How soon can we get that information?
I wish Dave was in the room, we're, we're working with that currently.
Okay.
Greg, the bid was for the Park District, not for the.
I'm sorry, Joe, 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 Mr. McCula.
Not for the.
Mr. McCula, this is not public comment time.
Okay. He's made a mistake, he misquoted me.
It's not public comment time.
Can I ask a question about this conversation?
Actually, no, no, Carolyn, I, I, I want to, um, continue. Actually, I wanted to say something too and I forgot because I got flustered on the last thing. That, uh, um, Greg mentioned, uh, this is, this is a budget. And a budget in general is a mandate not to spend more than that. We are not mandating that the library ever spend what we're budgeting for. Clearly, the staff routinely spends less than we budget. So, you know, we're, we're looking for that to happen in the future. This is, um, as Greg said, this is an allocation to cover us in case it does cost that much. But clearly, we're not looking for it to cost that much, we can't.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Patty, I.
Thank you. My other question is legally, isn't there a point in time that we're supposed to have a budget set?
Yes, although you, you guys do tend to do it earlier than many places because you like to have the budget set at the beginning of the fiscal year, so we know what our limits are. Many, and we used to do it, like in August and then do the levy right afterwards. So you guys changed the schedule a few years ago and that's fine, but, uh, but it doesn't have to be that way. Okay, in the future, we can change it.
So is there any way, just to play devil's advocate and make a few people happy, myself included, we could have the coring done to see exactly what the roof condition is? We don't necessarily need the estimates, but at least if we know what's going on with the roof, you know, how long do you think that would be?
Uh, I don't know. I, I don't have, I don't have a good answer to that. Um, but, you know, let me, uh, also stress that, uh, when we went to the earlier adoption of, of the budget.
Yes.
It's usually like limits out in the fourth week of August or something like that. And generally, that is at the August meeting. Um, and then we pulled it in to June thirty, or like the June meeting. So it took sixty days out of the process, essentially. Um, uh, I did advise, uh, the board at the time that we would have to work with estimates. You know, so. So, um, and this is one of those estimates. Further, um, this is not something that we would levy for. This is something that comes out of the special reserve fund, you know, it's.
I understand that.
Yeah, I think it's one point two million dollars or something like that. Um, so, um, you know, if we, when we get to the point where, you know, uh, we, we fully expended the, uh, special reserve fund, then we will transfer more money into it to cover anticipated expenses and so forth.
Okay, but he, you are in the process of getting that information, okay? Yes, thank you.
Diane? Diane?
Okay, um, so if we don't spend this one point two million on the roof, it just stays in the reserve fund? The rest of it? Um, it's not gonna affect the tax levy as a...
Shouldn't.
As a not. Okay, the other thing on, all these other items on here, if we put a hold on this, how does it affect the other items to look at or figure?
I, I don't, I don't think there's... I think that, I don't think that it stops anything.
Okay.
Or interferes with anything.
Okay, it just means we have to do it by August meeting?
Well, statutory.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Legally, when do we get the...
It's like the fourth Thursday in August, or, or some, you know, you don't have a lot of special...
Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, everybody's always talking about programming, it aggravates me. Because Susan sends this out every month, this is a list of every check and every payment that goes out. You don't like this, when it says programming, this amount of money for, and this...
No, it's really difficult to discuss budgeting with you.
Excuse me?
It is, it's just...
Okay, is this up for my comment?
Well, because you're, you're ridiculing me that I'm not satisfied with the general question.
It was a question.
With general information.
Nevermind, I, um, I'm finished with that question. Because it's, uh, it's in the monthly report.
That is not what I'm requesting, at all.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, if you're upset about it, but that is not how you review spending in a budget. When I talk about a program, I mean each program.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Okay, so, just for clarifications for myself, because I missed last month's meeting, um, I just want to reiterate so that in my own self, I am clear. The levy is still remaining flat.
Well, okay, you get, we haven't had that many, and that's, and that's in November, right?
Right, but that was our thought process, right? That the levy is remaining flat, so, even though that it's looking that...
I, I, I can't, I can't say that we articulated that in any way.
I thought that we kind of...
So, should we?
We've talked about the budget, we had to talk about the levy.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, so that...
What, the levy does fund the budget, and the budget is increasing, sure.
Okay, so, all right. But the, okay, so, let me, let me just think here. So, the budget, though, was very similar to what it was last year, it's just that because of our special projects.
Correct.
So, is that a better way to say it?
Yes.
Okay, so really, okay, I won't look ahead because we can't, but it's looking like it would be pretty close to that in my eyes. So... Yeah, let me just hear, okay, so, all right, so I know that that's, okay, so maybe that's not the right question, but that's what I'm looking at. We're not really raising anything, because, we're just raising because of these projects that need to be done, because our building is failing.
Well, I wouldn't say that the building is failing.
Well, well, no, but I mean, need improvements, there needs something that are...
There are maintenance items that need to be, uh, addressed at some point.
Coming out of warranty, and then some other items that need to be updated by the, based by this list, okay? All right, thank you for that. Okay, however, um, with the roof, because it seems like it's such a hot topic among the community right now, okay, with people that have come here today, um, we are in the process, we, we don't have the quotes right now, but like you said, we're in the process of getting the information and gathering. We don't know how much it will cost, but we wanna budget it so that we can actually do it, right? Okay. So, when the, when the process goes, when we start getting the bids, we then, as a board, then have to look at all of them and approve according to how we look at all the households.
Yeah.
You know?
So, in this current fiscal year, uh, we had, we had an item on the, uh, on the budget for two hundred and fifty dollars to replace the chiller.
Thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand, thank you, I wish it was two hundred and fifty. And, um, you know, so, we put that into the budget, and then when we actually inspected and we did the bidding, uh, we ended up with a price that was just under a hundred and fifty. Okay, so, you know, what we had going into the budgeting was advice that this was, uh, this needed to be addressed. We had seen a maintenance cost spike, um, as we were replacing, you know, different motors and valves and things of that nature, uh, in the chiller, and, uh, so when we budgeted, we didn't know what it would cost. Now, you'd say, wow, jeez, you padded it, you know, two fifty and you paid one fifty, right? Um, well, if you remember, the high bid was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The low bid was just under a hundred and fifty. So, you know, if there's all sorts of qualified contractors out there that are willing to work a little bit harder, or not work as hard, and, you know, submit, you know, submit a quote, I would imagine that if, uh, they were a lot busier during, during this time period, that we might have knocked out the lower quotes, and we would have ended up paying, you know, much closer to two fifty. But as, you know, luck would be able, we were able to get a reasonable, you know, reasonable price in a competitive situation.
Right, and we still have to rely on those bids that come in.
That's right. That's right. And, and the board, you know, quite frankly, in a bidding circumstance, the board is always within their right to say, I don't like any of these bids, let's try it again, you know, let's try to cast the net wider. Um, you know, but, you know, we've been, I think, pretty successful in the last, you know, several years, uh, getting decent bids for the work that we need done.
Just to clarify, that we can't send out an identical thing?
No.
Have to change it?
So, so, we're still in the process, it's, the one point two is, again, the, uh, the estimate, or a, uh, a high wall. Is that, I guess, the, what did I say?
Yeah.
Anybody say, any high wall?
It's a high one.
Okay, um, and anything over five thousand dollars, we still have to approve. So, we're still in control of the spending, basically.
Anything over five thousand dollars, and anything over, uh, twenty-five thousand, we have to go through the state bidding process.
Right.
Under the state procurement act.
Right.
So, um, you know, which is, you know, kind of a double, you know, I mean, so we open it up, and, and we tell everybody what we want, and then we have to take, you know, information from anybody who is qualified and wants to bid. We even take the unqualified bids, but, you know, we go through a qualification process to make sure that they do have the resources and so forth, and will do the job.
Right.
And that they are paying, uh, they are paying a competitive wage, and they do have insurance, and all the things that, you know, that are required in a bidding situation.
Okay, and then I just have one last question. So, we have the west, the east, and then there was one other park?
The Copper Tower.
The Copper, okay, great.
And none of this, none of this involves the copper and, uh, the tower.
Okay, so the west and the east are both out of warranty?
Right, the entire roof is out of warranty.
Okay, so, in my eyes, and this is just my opinion, as a board member for the village, um, for the public, for the village, for the, I don't know, library, anything out of warranty, especially our roof, and with the, the spots I see in all the ceiling tiles in here, with everything, I don't want any responsibility of our roof caving in. And I think it's due diligence to actually put this aside, go through the full process, and then vote on what's correct. So, I agree to, um, keep it in. That's my point.
Go.
Um, for starters, so, at my understanding, we have not gone out for quotes, and we don't plan to, we're gonna just wait till the bidding process?
I think the, well, the bidding process is to give us...
Well, quotes don't, are, are, if you have people come in and submit quotes, you don't have to be obligated to accept them. A bid, once you, once you submit a bid, it's, it's almost like an agreement. But my point is, I, I, I am totally against one point two, or one point whatever million dollars for anything, not letting quotes to justify the cost. But back to your point about noticing, um, some marks or something on the ceiling, um, you know, how do we know that wasn't from a previous problem, since according to this engineering report, there is no need to replace this roofing right now? So, I'm trying to figure out, where are we getting this, 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 this need? Because we're out of warranty, but they don't see the condition of the roofs to be necessarily needing to be replaced right now. But yet, we're gonna put one point two million, you know, and just close our eyes? That is irresponsible. I, I just can't, I can't pro- validate that. And the fact that we haven't even asked for quotes. And I don't, I don't see what the big deal is, that you used to be able to have your budget completed in August. Now, we can't complete it in July. All that means is you start soon enough, so you're prepared. I mean, I don't understand why it's always so complicated for us. But it's not a reason not to have quotes, that, but that's just my take on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One more roll out, Karen, anything?
Uh, I was just gonna say, I do recall why we switched, or why we wanted to switch over to guessing our budget earlier. Really seems to me to be a better process, to actually have your budget in place before you start the year. It tells the staff before the beginning of the year, this is how many dollars you have for the year, and they don't start the fiscal year without really knowing what the budget is. So, I've always thought it's appropriate to pass your budget before the beginning of the year. While legally, we may be able to wait, I just don't think it is the best policy to do that. And so, that's why we switched over to getting the budget in place before the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, and, and again, I've always understood the budget certainly would be like the staff's contract with the board in terms of, we will not spend more than this. This is the, this is the seal, this is the top. Not we are gonna spend this much, but this is the most we're gonna spend for any one of these items. For instance, last year, we had a fairly large amount of first special reserve, because we thought we were gonna be able to get some, to some projects that we were never able to get to. So, we didn't spend that money. That money just stayed in the bank. And that will happen this year too, if for some reason or other, we don't get to all these projects, or they don't cost nearly as much as we think they're gonna cost, and money will just stay in the bank. And so, that's what I think, that, um, the budget as written is appropriate. Certainly, when it comes time to actually look at those bids, we're gonna be scrutinizing those, those bids. We're gonna be looking at them, and we should, as we must. Because of the dollar amount, we can't just get quotes. We have to get chances already, because it's over the required, uh, dollar amount. So, we will be scrutinizing those bids, and we will either be accepting the lowest responsible bidder, or we may decide not to accept any of them at all, because that will be our option at that time. But that's not a decision we're making tonight, exactly how much we're gonna be spending for that roof. That's a decision that we'll be making down the road. And that's all I understand about that.
Great. Jenny?
Um, my concern is, since we have to vote on how we're handling the levy situation, which I personally don't think needs to be raised. Well, I know, I'm just saying, for November, I think we should try and have these bids done before we have that meeting, so that we get a better idea of what we're looking at as far as possible as best.
Okay, so, um, you're, you're connecting a capital expenditure...
With other stuff, I understand.
To, to the levy, and what we have is money in the bank, already set aside, uh, for big repairs and so forth. So, this does not, this does not, uh, play into your decision on the levy. No, having said that, if we had November...
It would be a different...
It'd be a far different story, because we would have to raise the money. As a matter of fact, we, we, given the size of, of the ask in the budget, we would be in such trouble that we would have to go far beyond the one point nine percent, uh, the, uh, the state of Illinois CPI.
We're not doing that.
Of course not, of course, because we have, we have this money set aside in order to, in order to do it. So, when you think about, when you think about the tax levy, it's not, it's not good to think about these capital-type expenditures.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just, to me, the majority of the people that were here sounded like that's what they thought. We were gonna raise our taxes more. Um, okay? But I still, if possible, like, if it's, you know, like...
Okay, Diane, anyone?
Can you, um, address the fact that one of our presidents said he was against this one point five million dollars because we should put it in a capital assessment plan?
Yeah, I understand that. And, and it's not one point five, it's one point two.
I agree with that.
So, the number's off a little bit, um, and we do have money in something called the special reserve account, uh, which maybe is the same thing that, you know, that we're planning to, um, but, you know, I, I just don't understand that.
I really think there was, uh, a comparison between the roof needing to be repaired right now, so we need one point two million, or whatever that number is, compared to the fact that according to these reports, the roof is really not in need of repair, so why does that money even need to be included in the budget? When it's not something you all need for a longer time?
And, um, yeah, one time, during one of our meetings, and I don't know who it was that said, this increase is really one half of one percent. What, can you explain that?
The operating increases, uh, yeah, that's what I'm...
Yeah, the operating, go ahead.
That's it, that's how it's gonna say.
Okay. It's the operating.
Yeah.
I guess that's what you were talking about.
Right, right, yeah, the capital projects are very different than I think, I guess, it's different.
Linda, anything else?
Uh, I don't think so, I think, um, but thank you very much.
Okay, so, uh, Diane, you wanna take a roll? Oh, I'm this.
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
No.
Diane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Patty?
All right, next item, do I hear a motion to approve that the Niles Main District Library continue to participate in the non-resident library card Illinois program and charge an annual fee of two hundred ninety-one dollars based on the formula established by the Illinois State Library?
All right. Second question is...
All right, uh, Susan, you wanna unite us with this, this part?
Yeah, this is, uh, for people that live in an area that is not paying any tax dollars to any library. So, there are pockets of them in Glenview, there's a little bit in unincorporated Displanes, um, though most of unincorporated Displanes does pay taxes to the library district, but there's a pocket that does not. And so, those people can come to a library and buy a card for their family for basically what their taxes would have been. And everybody have to calculate that based on the state's formula that is spelled out here in, in the memo. So, this here, two hundred ninety-one dollars.
And they go to another library?
You know, there are really complicated rules surrounding where you have to go to get the card, but yes, once you have the card, it's worth it, and for the whole family.
I know a little bit about this, because you've done this for several seasons. And I remember the cost being higher before.
It can be.
Because I remember it being around three something.
It could, yeah, it could've been at some point, because we're close to the three there, yeah. It all depends on what the operating budget was, um, this year, um, because our population hasn't changed since the census. So, that's the only thing that's changed, is the operating.
All right, since Diane and Patty screwed up my system, anyone else have anything to say on this one?
I, I have a question. Oops. Um, you mentioned, um, the unincorporated areas are Glenview and Displanes, and then you mentioned Displanes, there are Displain residents who pay our library taxes.
Most of the unincorporated Displanes residents do pay taxes to this library.
Are there any other areas that are outside of Niles where they do pay taxes for us?
Uh, unincorporated Glenview as well.
So, that one is what, okay, so, if we have, we have areas of Glenview who pay taxes, and areas of Glenview who don't pay taxes? And they're eligible for this, is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Oh, I have one last question. Did I see Northfield on our list?
Uh, well, the Northfield Township is the top triangle there, and so that sometimes gets mixed up. But it's not the town of Northfield, it's Northfield Township.
So there may be people in that area who are in our library dish?
There are people, yeah. That's where some of the big condos are, or where they are. Apartment buildings.
But it's in North-
It's Northfield Township.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay.
Yeah, but it's unincorporated Glenview.
Oh, oh, that's very confusing with those numbers.
Code.
Remember, we were trying to change our names to the Niles Main, Northfield, libraries.
So, so one real quick question then. If those people are in unincorporated Glenview, then they have to pay this fee for a card?
It's not because they're in unincorporated Glenview, it's because, that pocket actually is in the district, and they do pay taxes to us, but there are some-
Okay.
There are some little pockets that I can kind of point out real quickly. They're kind of over more, well, actually, Adina probably knows much better than I do. But it's, it kind of, there's an area over here, and they would have to be contiguous with the library district to ever even become part of the district. So there's some over here and here, and then there's more in Displanes going in that direction. But this, but it are, the ones that can pay to us are over here and here, and there's a little bit behind Apollo School.
Okay, they can pay to us, or they're in our district?
Most of them are in our district, but those bits I was pointing out there, very crudely, are not paying taxes to anybody.
Oh, okay, alright, gotcha.
They were never, they were never annexed into the district during the period that they were doing a lot of annexing, and they still could be annexed if that was something the board wanted to pursue.
Alright, thank you.
Karen, you have a thought?
I was just wondering, just ballpark figure, how many families are gonna do this?
Let me ask if she is the head of our patron services.
Maybe around five a year.
Five families?
No.
Yeah.
It's down to you.
Okay.
So all that discussion?
Sure.
Well, most of those people are closer to other libraries, so they're not gonna trek all the way down here.
They'd take a real short ride round.
Alright, I guess I'll send it. Diane, would you please take a roll?
Diane?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Yes. No, does anybody need a break?
No.
No, please, let's go. It's getting late.
Okay, we'll go through this one real quick, real quick. Alright, so Linda, make sure it's real quick. Now, any motions to approve resolution 1901, account resolutions, certificate for treasury management services, government entity? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Greg, you wanna just give us a real quick one on this?
Sure. Every two years, we do something like this in response to the changing complexion of the board. Instead of more straightforward, we have new signers on the, on the bank account. So what we need to do is formalize that through this resolution to the bank, and make sure that they have all the appropriate information, appropriate signatures, so that our assets are safe.
Right. Anyone want to go around? Anybody have any questions?
I just wondered about this there. I hear they're closing all these locations. Is this still gonna be convenient for us to bank here? Do we need to move to a different bank?
We're keeping an eye on it.
Yeah. I saw that coincidentally this week.
And quite a few in this state.
Yeah, I, well, they worked with MB Financial, and I'm not, I'm not clear if the, if the branches that they're closing are MB Financial or different.
Closing MB Financial.
Well, I, I know that there's some of that because of duplicate, duplicate of market presence. I also know that the branch that we go to over here on Oakton is in one of the new tips. And they're looking at, you know, knocking, knocking that building down for potential-
Is that the one at the dumpster in Oaktine?
No, it's the one right here on Oakton.
Oh.
Like about, like a block or so.
Right.
It's the same area.
Were you asking if they were closing that one, or you're asking?
I know they're not giving it down. Yes, and they're selling that building. Now, I don't know if they'll reconstitute the bank in, on the ground floor of the project that they're developing or not. But, you know, once that happens, you know, we'll be forced to go to another location. So as I said, we're monitoring it. We're satisfied with the service that we get and the fees that we pay, so.
Anybody else have anything on this one? Say no. Great. Take a roll, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
What? Yes, please. Yes, I need to. Uh, can we take a, a break? Can I call it at nine thirty? Alright, we're all back in. So I am calling the regular meeting, Act Two Order, Act 1010.
I have to figure out how to do this.
I just, I just wrote there some-
Yeah, just call this one. Thank you.
Carolyn? No. Well, you're not gonna need the right order.
It doesn't count.
Linda?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Patty?
Yeah.
Karen? Tim?
Uh, here.
Okay, so this is to resume?
Yes.
It's 10 times.
Alright.
Did you discuss that?
We did not do it.
No.
Okay, so I'm making a motion.
Are you making it or are you asking?
I'm making the motion. That's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna make the motion. Is that okay? Can I make the motion?
No.
Alright, do I have a motion to provide for a raise for Susan Lenkey's salary to, of $2,000, and provide for a bonus of $2,000?
So, second. Okay, so that was Karen and Patty.
Yes, ma'am.
Raise 2,000 to provide bonus 2,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright. I guess that's it. I think we should call the roll.
Okay, Carolyn?
Um, no.
Linda?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Do we also need a motion to set for Susan Lenkey's goals that are set forth? I don't know that we've done that in the past.
I think we could have a motion for that.
I think they believe you just told me.
Yeah, I don't know.
Absolutely.
I don't know. But the goals are, I think, are, you can't resist that they're going to be in the house.
Alright, so if there's nothing else, we can move to the other portion of the meeting. Correct? Alright. And I have something that I'd like us all to review. That would be great. So I've made, I reviewed the bylaws of the board, and I made a number of changes to them. Really, it's to my, in, in my, it's my opinion that it's a lot of housekeeping. Carolyn, before you look, don't look yet, don't look. Don't look. I wanna, I wanna explain it before you ask somebody. Yeah, it's a lot of housekeeping, so I'm hoping that we don't have a lot of discussion, and it really shouldn't. It should all seem fairly straightforward. And I created a document for our trustee positions. Let's not look until I finish talking about it. Thank you.
So, Tim, are these bylaws?
There are two documents.
Are these library documents?
One document is the bylaws, and another document is a brand-new document that I, I created for our procedures, our board meeting procedures, so that we can hopefully be more collaborative rather than combative. And I, you know, it would be wonderful if we worked a little bit better as a board. This is my proposal. You know, we'll, I want us to redo it. I'm gonna take, you know, the comments and changes, anything you need. Decide as a board. So the bylaws need a majority, a five votes for it, but the trustee manual doesn't. It's just, it's a work, it's a document for us how we use our, our tag. So, that being said, take it with you. Go with God and review it for our next meeting. Possibly we can get through it in our July meeting. Let's see how it works. We may have a lot to do in the July meeting. I don't know if it would be very quick to get through it. So it's your copy. Take it and review it. The other thing, any questions on that? You know, I know you have a little bit, so we're not gonna-
It shows what was changed.
Correct.
Yes, what was changed?
Proposed, yes.
Okay, okay, so I could at least compare.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. These are, these are all proposed, you know, nothing has been changed. We all agree collectively I want to change. Okay, so we have Dennis's position to replace. Let's talk about it. I'd like to go through the process that we did the last time of putting out a notice in the papers and putting out a notice on the website for a letter of intent. I think we called it an application last time. I don't like the word "application" because there really is no application. What we accept is somebody's letter of intent.
Or interest, wasn't it?
A letter of interest, a letter of interest. That would be great.
Okay.
A letter of interest as to wanting to participate on the board or doing the board. Now, Dennis's position, he has two year, uh, four years left. But according to the state statutes, we will be replacing him for two years until the next election.
Oh, it does work that way.
That's how it works. And then the next election, we'll have three positions for six years and one position for two years. That's what hopefully will be in the two elections.
Is that how they come?
That's how that works.
Four positions?
So there'll be four positions, we'll be all open.
But I thought when he, when he goes up for election, it's a six-year term.
No.
It's for the completion of his term.
Well, we have to.
And he has to be elected? After we appoint him?
We appoint him up until the next election. And then at that point, yeah, that's all.
Goes back to the voters.
Yeah.
So how are they gonna know he's two years?
Well, they'll have to say it on the-
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So technically, I think the way I understand it on the ballot, they'll have the six-year terms, and then the two-year term would be a separate-
Correct.
...service, yeah. Because, now, so, okay.
Yeah, so, but the point being, we have to replace for the next, until the next election. So I think we should follow that procedure where we go out for those letters of interest. And now, we don't necessarily have to interview. I mean, it's up to really us how we do this. If we, you know, if we, we find somebody that collectively we, we've known you to have, or we've liked, or whatever the situation is, we can accept that person. If we get a lot of interest, and I'm, and I'm really open to suggestions on how we should go about this. It would be great if we could resolve it by July meeting, if we got a number of- Clearly, if we got 50 resumes, that'd be an issue. But if we only get three, I mean, letters, if we only get three or four, then we, as a board, can, can review those at the July meeting and make a decision. But, but, you know, it's a thought, it's how we wanna go about doing this. So I wouldn't, I don't really wanna drag it out for, yeah, Karen.
Suggestion, we should be transparent, and we should at least take five minutes to interview the people rather than say the board decided.
Sure.
It doesn't look good, you know?
That's what we do at that time.
Then, then we, and it really has to be at the August meeting. Because we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't decide.
Sure.
Unless we do, we could do this. We could make the deadline, say, three weeks from now. And then we, as a board, review those resumes over the email and ask those people to come at the July meeting.
We could do that.
Okay, right, yeah, I see. So then we'll still get, we'll accomplish it in July, yeah?
Right.
It would give you an idea to give people about three weeks to submit a letter of interest, put it on the webpage, and do whatever else we did in the past to let them know our-
I'll bring it up.
And the deadline would be, say, a week before the board meeting, or roughly that. And then you could shoot all the letters of interest out to us and schedule, schedule those interviews for the July meeting. Let's say, assuming there's no more than five.
Okay, that's, that's the piece that I was trying to get at.
If there are more than five, then, I'm not saying we wouldn't interview them, but I don't know that we would have the time to, we'd have to decide that, I think, what we're gonna do.
Well, if we all get a copy of the resumes, we could voice our opinion as to which ones we wanna interview. You don't, you don't have to. There's no law saying you have to interview every person who picks a resume.
You'd only have to be able to communicate that to me, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I don't know that I'd wanna be, I wouldn't be transparent to the rest of you what, you know, I think I was filtering through the resumes and just answering that one.
Right, I, I would just assume, say, as long as there's five or less, we'll interview them all. And if there are more than five, then at the July meeting, we have to decide what we're gonna do then. In terms of, maybe we would, or, or interview them all, or maybe we find some other way to-
Would we have to have an extra meeting? Break it up to August, maybe, and then just, and I, I don't know, you know, it's, it's a local community, and we just wanna, we wanna make sure we look like we're giving everybody the same chance. So maybe we don't wanna interview too many at each meeting, because we'll be here till 11 o'clock. So maybe we'll just-
So do we want to set a, a deadline of, say, the weekend before the meeting?
Yeah, definitely to get the paper.
Bring all the resumes and interest at the July meeting. We collectively decide who we want to interview? And then interview them at the August meeting?
And would that be closed session that we decide, or would that be the open session? That would be open.
I think the conversation would be closed session, I believe.
The interview?
Yeah.
The interview, the interview also was closed session most times.
It is, it is kinda-
Didn't we interview an open session?
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think so. I think they're-
No, alright, maybe I'm confused with consultants.
But I'm saying, as far as discussing the applications, that would be closed session, wouldn't it? And then we would vote or say who we're voting for, who we want.
Yeah, we can't talk about people.
You can talk about individuals.
I thought we were gonna review those on, through email, right?
No, we decided not to, that we couldn't collectively do it.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, okay.
No, you could, you actually could submit to Susan, like, if there's five resumes, a ranking one to five, and then she could tally all of the votes, so to speak, and come up with the top three or something like that. And then share the rankings with everybody who they'd be assured.
Yeah, let's have to do that.
You know what?
I would just assume you'd give everyone an interview.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't have to be a lot of interview. We can make the interviews really short. It could be like ten minutes or-
I'd like to work by last time.
Yeah. And, and we actually could draw up that.
Well, that's the thing. We do need, you know, collectively, you know, individually, go out there and try to find people who are gonna be interested in being court members, because everybody, I ask them, no, wait, boy, I wanna be a court member. Except for Diane.
When you think of that, I think we could have a lot to look over.
You worked out. So, okay, what did, what did we decide?
Whatever. Okay.
Where, where did we?
So what are we doing this?
Are we going to review the resumes together under July meeting and then go for the August meeting?
When is the deadline gonna be for them to submit?
Well, that depends on when, what we wanna do.
I mean, I would think it would be by, what?
Yeah, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
No, but I think that it would be before the July meeting. And then, because that's gonna take time to first to be actually in the paper, right? Because we're gonna do it in the paper.
Yeah, we have to do it.
Right? So then it's gonna take a little time for it to get in print, and then give them at least, what, like, a two-week? I don't even know if we put them in the case.
No, that would be good, yeah, not like a notice.
We'll send a, we'll send a press release.
Yeah.
We'll send a press release.
What is it, like, news conference or press release?
I think the newspaper.
Well, you send a press release, you know, you send a press release to the paper, then it's up to the editors how they want to report it.
Oh, because they could do it online?
Well, generally, the way the journal works, if it's online, it finds its way into, into the, into the paper.
But they can push it out through social media as well.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And that's what we would do.
Okay.
You know, we would do social media and then upload it to the website.
But we, as long as we do it the same way we did it before. We would, are we shooting to have somebody by August or to pull that?
I thought by August. You know, can we still have some, if you're gonna do this a week, and you're gonna have a deadline, you said, before the July meeting, can we, if we get six, then we're gonna interview three in July and three in August, can we pull that off? I mean, what are we gonna do, evaluate these resumes?
Well, we need to decide, when, when we get the letters, and if they give us a resume or something, we, as a group, should decide which ones we wanna talk to. We don't have to talk to every person who gives us a resume.
But if there's just five or-
Well, yeah, but let's say there's ten, or there's twenty, or let's just say, we can, we can decide, no, you know, we wanna see these three people. Like anybody else, that's, that's how you do someone.
I think last time you asked some questions. I have to go back and look. I think you had any questions. We did have a few.
Right.
We did a round thing.
We did a round thing.
I have a different book. Is there any way to, once we get the resumes, that you put them all in a folder for each one? Is it gonna come and get them, or something like that?
Sure.
And then we would be able to see them before the meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, unless you send them through an email like that.
Well, I mean, I can still upload them inside with just... Yeah, absolutely. Get my hard copy. Because I'd like...
Put them on the board there, right?
Well, maybe we'll be like...
Yeah, but then we could make a decision to record them.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, get it going. Yeah, we could put them in an envelope.
Physically in the...
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, because I guess we're really not going to be able to make a decision till the July meeting.
Okay, so what did we, I think we said?
For who we...
I think we're going to put out the notice.
Yeah.
We're going to solicit letters of interest for the July meeting. At the July meeting, we'll have an executive session where we review these letters and we decide on who we want to interview. We interview these people at the August meeting. And I think we can probably make a decision at the August meeting.
Yes, yes, that's good.
Are we all okay with that?
So, there's interview in August.
We'll interview in August.
Five or less interview in August, right?
Would we want to inter, like, have a special board meeting and just do it prior so they can start?
We can just say in July, at the July meeting.
I'm okay with that, but I had a hard time getting people to do the special meeting. I mean, if you guys want a special meeting, I'm okay with that.
July's horrible.
But it didn't seem to work out. Do you want me to send some more suggestions of dates?
I'm cool in August. Yes, our family is gone.
Do we want to have, like, do we want to have an early August meeting for this? Like, you know, the...
Well, it touches.
But then, but then we could actually have someone in our August meeting.
That's what I'm thinking. If we decide in August... Keep them here. See, we can decide until us. And then we can get everyone ready. We get ready, other day could be nice.
Today's the 19th, the next meeting is on the 17th. If it's a three-week time period, then you, you probably, not counting the 19th, you probably have to have everything until the 11th. In terms, in terms of...
Well, I'm saying that, that since we're not going to review the resumes until the actual meeting, we could put that deadline and say Saturday before the meeting, right?
Then that's right.
Well, it's a Friday.
If you're getting them by board packet, it needs to be the Friday. It needs, they need to have gotten their...
Maybe Thursday, so they can be in the board...
Which is like one more day.
Yes.
The date, the deadline is the day before it needs to be packaged for us.
Correct.
As it turns out.
All right, and I will send everything to you before I start posting and stuff so that you can make sure it's in the mail.
All right. And then email us if something is going amiss with our plan.
Whatever that is.
Whatever our plan is.
Yeah, right?
Was there anything else?
Uh, that is it for my two... Does anybody else? Karen, anything? Patty, anything? Diane, anything? Linda, anything?
Absolutely.
Carolyn, anything?
No.
All right. Just see, I want everybody to have an equal opportunity here. All right, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Great, great. Diane, please take the roll.
I said second.
Me?
Linda.
Okay, Linda. Carolyn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes, ma'am.
That's her answer.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.